Are you guys ready? Is everybody else ready? Microphones are in place. Ready? Camera. Oh, Judy's not ready. Welcome, everyone. This is the December 18th meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. Judy, would you call the rolls since actually we didn't do that earlier?
Sure. Wintra?
Here.
Housh?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
McQueen?
Here.
Hemfling?
Here.
Also present are Village Manager Patty Bates, Assistant Village Manager Melissa Dodd, Solicitor Chris Conard, Chief of Police Brian Carlson, and I think that covers it.
Great. So are we going to have our festive council members show off their festive outfits?
Uh-oh.
Oh! Woo! Brian?
Do you agree with consensus on who's the best looking?
Always Jerry.
We're starting off with swearing in three new commission members for the Library Commission. If you three would come up to the front. You have your -- can you -- do you have enough light to read those? So just read your -- the oath of office.
Altogether?
Yes.
I solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Ohio when I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Library Commission.
Great, welcome. Why don't you all introduce yourselves so everybody knows who you are?
Becky Oshman.
Dorothy Smith.
Lee Ducking.
And Becky is returning from how many years have you served already, Becky?
About a dozen or so.
That's great. And we have two new members, which is great to have.
Lee has also been on.
Oh, you've been on. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So Dorothy is our new representative, and we know she has great credentials because she actually worked on the records retention here for the village. So that was quite a job in and of itself. So we appreciate you coming back and doing even more.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Will you try to use that over there?
If you want, we don't need them. I mean, I don't know that you need them.
Or you can keep them as a souvenir?
Yes. With my -- yes. Well, I'll sign this here. So Judy will take care of that. What do we have next? Next, we have announcements. Brian?
Yes. So first of all, I wanted to highlight that, you know, we have put a call out for the Advisory Committee for the Active Transportation Planning Process. We're looking for anyone interested to submit that interest by December 30th, and we're going to get started with that process mid-January. I also wanted to show off this amazing plaque that Patty received for 30 years of public service at the I C M A conference. Patty, awesome job. Keep up the good work. And also, I wanted to mention that, again, January 19th, we're going to be reopening the Bryan Center Gallery. I think many of you have heard that the Yellow Springs Arts Council is going to be bringing back their permanent collection, and this is going to be the first, basically, event to kick that off, and we'll be in Rooms A and B from 6:00 to 9:00 on the 19th. Also, I wanted to highlight the Little Art Theater is going to have their annual New Year's Eve celebration, and that is going to start at 8:00. There are still tickets available. We've got our own Devil's Backbone with Carl Schumacher that's going to be performing that night, and the movie Mamma Mia is going to be showing, so it's going to be a very musical evening, and I think that's all we've got.
And if you're going to that, or even if you're not, after that, we're going to have our traditional New Year's Eve celebration downtown, thanks to Chief Carlson and Chief Altman. We'll have a very -- we'll have the streets closed. It will be quasi-official. It's not going to be heavy-handed. It's going to be just as fun as ever. Ball drop will happen, so please come down and enjoy that, and be safe, and be happy, and celebrate.
Yeah, and actually, I should add, we did create a new part of the event, which is Mayor Foberd, on his last day as mayor, is going to swear in the new council members, mayor, and also school board and township trustees. That's going to happen at the Little Art on New Year's Eve as well.
Oh, nice. Inside the Little Art or out?
Inside.
Okay.
Yes. Everybody's welcome to come in.
Okay. And I also wanted to mention, since we -- I think we only have one more meeting before that, that Martin Luther King Junior Day is January 15th, and the celebration, the parade, I don't know if the parade's going to start probably at the school.
Starts at Subway.
Starts at Subway. Okay. Well, that's always -- that's very festive.
Yeah, they've changed -- they've changed the route this year, and it starts at Subway.
But the celebration, the ending celebration, will be here in the gym, so just a little change. We've had a change the past couple of years, so I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And there is, if we celebrate, for those celebrating Christmas, there are a few more shopping days, so please shop local. Melissa?
Oh, there is a water main break in the area of Allen and Meadow. So crews are out there, and they are working on that now, so if residents are having any discolored water, they're just asked to run their faucets until that runs clear, and as soon as we get the text from the crews, and once that's been repaired, we will let everybody know. And also, the new water plant is nearing completion. There is just one more approval from the EPA that we are waiting on, and once that happens, we will let everybody know that that is going online, and any adjustments to water softeners that are in homes that need to be made. So we will make sure that we communicate everything along the way to all the residents.
Great. Anyone else?
Well, I know we've got resolutions on the docket, but as everybody knows, I think, it's Karen and Jerry's last meeting, and it's, wow, it's going to be an interesting meeting for all of us, I think. But, you know, I just want to say that I have been incredibly honored to work with these two for the last four years, and it's going to be really hard to see them go, but I'm also excited to have Kevin and Lisa coming onboard, and we're going to continue the great work the council has done, and I'm sure we'll have more to say when those resolutions come up.
Thanks.
I would just like to say something, too, because, you know, people come up to me and they say, "God, I'm glad I don't have your job of being on council." But truly, working with the five of us, and in particular, I'll call out Karen and Jerry because they're leaving, has been such a pleasure. I mean, it's even nice to disagree, you know, because, really, truly, because we don't take it personally, you know? And so when I ask Jerry, when I ask Jerry if he would like to comment on what does he think about something, and he says, "No, he doesn't want to," okay. So, you know, it's been really cool to work with Karen and Jerry, and we'll all miss them, and just so everyone knows what -- how much they have contributed to the village. And this is our last council meeting of the year, right? So I'd like to also acknowledge all of the staff that work for the village. Someone also recently pointed out to me, you know, we sit out in front, and we have some other staff sitting down there that get to sit out in front, too, and get to be seen and criticized or admired, whichever happens to be. But we have -- how many staff do we have?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight people who work to keep this village running, and a lot of them probably -- a lot of people have never even met. But if they weren't doing their job, like some of them are out right now fixing a water line, you know, we would not be very happy. So I would just like to extend appreciation also to all of the staff of the village, and have a great end of the year and a good new year.
Great. Thanks. One announcement I also want to make is that there was the groundbreaking for CRESCO last Thursday morning. It was quite the media circus. Hopefully, you've all seen it either on TV or in the press. There was a great article in -- well, no, I guess there wasn't a great article. There was a great article on the website, not in the news yet, since it was on Thursday. But quite a momentous day, and the CRESCO folks are very pleased. They were the first facility to break ground, to make any movement on a new facility in Ohio, so we're incredibly proud of that. We -- the staff, talking about the staff, the staff threw together a, you know, getting the groundbreaking organized. If you haven't noticed, there's equipment. That site is now covered with equipment, so they are ready to start. So a very, very important occasion and time for the village, so I'm definitely happy to have been involved in that. Next item is the consent agenda. All that we have this point are the minutes of the January 4th meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Review of the agenda. Is there anything we need to add or move on the agenda? Lots of legislation typical for end of the year. Anything?
Would it be possible to move Resolution 61 before Resolution 59?
Fifty-nine. Because it kind of casts a pall on the receiving.
I know, I was going to say, yeah.
It came in late, so it had to get that number, but if we can move it before, that would be great.
Sure, let's do that. Okay. It sounds so exciting. Okay, sounds good. Brian, do you want to review the petitions and communications?
I do. So we received a letter, it was actually the Sunday before our last meeting, from Donna and Al Denman, highlighting that we should think more about diversity in our hiring practices. We also received a letter from Judith Hemfling about basically making sure that new council members were orientated so that they had more interaction with current council members, and we have responded to that. We're planning, and I think we'll mention this later, to have an early council retreat. I think we've scheduled that for January 10th, 11th?
Tenth, I believe.
Tenth, yes. We also received a resignation letter from Cindy Powles from the Justice System Task Force. Alice Jacobs highlighted some things about the data analysis for the report that we're going to look at later today. Lisa Krieger submitted something about the community outreach specialist and some highlights about things we should consider, which we're going to also be talking about on our agenda. And I also submitted a couple documents about active transportation planning, just to help people understand a little bit more about the process that we're going to be going through in January.
Okay, moving on to public hearings and legislation. We have a second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2017-42. Here we go.
And I'm assuming you want this by title only?
Title only, please.
This is repealing Section 1040.01 Utility Dispute Resolution Board establishment authority of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new Section 1040.01 Utility Dispute Resolution Board establishment authority.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Patty or Melissa?
Okay, so this resolution, or I'm sorry, this is an ordinance, isn't it? Yes, this ordinance is basically taking the -- changing the makeup of the Utility Dispute Resolution Board, and it's actually putting it in line with one of the other boards that we have that deals with income tax or tax review. So the way that this was made up before is this was made up of five people. It was three staff members and two citizens, and now the makeup is going to be two members appointed by council, and those cannot be employees, and then there will be a third member that is appointed by the village manager that could be an employee. It's just not allowed to be the finance director or somebody that is directly involved with the decision-making process over utilities, which the finance director currently is. So, and they are also going to serve a two-year term versus a three-year term. So this is basically just changing the composition of that board.
And does this -- so this doesn't cover the Tax Appeals Board? That's?
No. It's basically putting the composition of this board in line with the Tax Appeals Board, so that the intention was that the same members would serve on both, but they needed to be the same makeup.
Okay.
So this is changing it to be in line with the Tax Appeals Board.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council? This is second reading. I'll open the public hearing for comment. Seeing and hearing none. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Sims?
Yes.
Housh?
Yes.
Hemfling?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Wintra?
Yes.
2017-43.
Do you want this just by title and then let Melissa?
By title and let Melissa do the detailing, and just to note, this is an emergency piece of legislation, so this will be the final reading.
Okay. This is the 2017 supplemental appropriations and declaring an emergency, Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa?
Okay, so this is the final supplemental appropriation of the year. What this basically does is this is the -- this gives me the ability to look at where all of our expenditures were and be able to account for anything that was above and beyond and sometimes below what was originally appropriated at the beginning of the year, and I think we've done two other supplemental appropriations during the year to account for different things. So if the ordinance format, I've got a worksheet that accompanies it that gives more detail than what the ordinance actually does. It is split out by the different funds, and it actually tells you where the money is going and what it is specifically for. So I'm going to go through the totals, and then I will hit some highlights. The general fund, I am appropriating $408,812 in addition, and then I'll go through and I'll explain what some of those were. With the special revenue funds, there's an additional $44,100 appropriated. And then the next area, the capital project funds, there's an additional $428,625,000 appropriated. And then the final area are enterprise funds. There are an extra $561,076 appropriated, which brings the grand total supplemental appropriations with this ordinance to $1,442,613. And I know that that number seems big, and I am going to explain where those figures came from. If council would recall during the original budget process that we were going through for 2018, we had some additional money in the general fund that had come in as a result of increased income taxes, as well as the sale of Sutton Farm. So what I did was, if you look at the transfers and advances line, there's $404,812 going out. $400,000 of that is to go out and to be received into the facilities improvement fund, and that is going to be to support the Sutton Farm crew quarters that is the -- the bid was approved at the last meeting, I believe, two meetings ago, and that amount was $284,625. So that's also being appropriated in this ordinance under the facilities improvement fund. So that would leave an extra $116,000 worth of those additional revenues from the general fund to remain in the facilities improvement fund to be earmarked towards future projects in addition to the Sutton Farm crew quarters. And the other things in the general fund were just some very minor adjustments. The extra $4,812 was going to be appropriated to the guaranteed deposits fund that we were zeroing out, since we no longer take deposits for utilities, and that fund was coming up short at the end of the year. So the general fund, those are the highlights there. There wasn't anything major in the special revenue funds. The biggest appropriation was $42,000 in the Parks and Recreation Fund, and that was to basically cover some maintenance and some extra personnel cost at the end of the pool season that weren't anticipated, because we're still trying to get our bearings in terms of how much it's costing us to run that on our own versus out of contract, as we had been doing. And then the capital project funds, the last meeting, council approved the purchase of a line truck for the electric department, so the electric capital improvement fund is seeing that expenditure of $132,000 that was approved at the last meeting, and then the other large expenditure was that Sutton Farm crew quarters there, $284,625. And then the U.S. ACA Grant Fund, that work out at the entrance to the CBE, that infrastructure work is done, and there was $260,000 appropriated, and the total cost with everything was, I believe, $272,000, and all that money was there. It just needed to be -- that last little bit needed to be appropriated to cover those final costs. And then I do look for that money to be -- I was hoping that that money was going to come back to the village by the end of the year, but I know that the Army Corps of Engineers, they need to do a site visit from Louisville, and they should be here. We've got them on the books to come next week to do the site visit and then hopefully close that out. So that was kind of a side note. And then the other large, the other large area are the enterprise funds. The biggest there is the electric fund, $364,000, and that's for power costs. What you don't see on the other side of this is the increase that we had come in in revenues. So all of our appropriations are approved by council. However, our estimated resources do not have to come before council, and so when I file this ordinance with the county tomorrow, I will also be filing an updated estimated resources, which is going to show the, I think it was an extra $275,000 worth of revenues on the electric fund side that come in to offset some of these extra expenditures for power costs. And then--
Was that simply because of the hydro coming online?
It could be. It could point to a number of different things. I know that the majority of the hydro projects are now online, with the exception of one. Are they all are online? So power costs are just something that are very hard to account for in terms of expenditures, but we do have a power cost adjustment that's worked into our rates. So if it costs us more to get our power, that cost is passed along to the customer as well. So that's why our revenues, if our expenditures go up, our revenues go up as a result of that power cost adjustment. So council just doesn't see the other side of that outside of the budget process typically. And then the -- oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I did find out just today that the last unit at Smithland came on, so all the hydras are online today.
And then the water fund, we had some additional cost in water treatment. The biggest one of those was our first payment to the water plant actually just came out, which we weren't necessarily anticipating. We thought that that was going to be 2018. So that was an $89,000 payment. It was the interest-free loan, and that was OPWC money. So I did have to account for that, and then some of the others were just additional utility costs and some wage costs as well. So that's the bulk. I know that that's a lot, and that number is really big, but a lot of that is just utilizing additional revenues that came in from the general fund, and then the other big one was the power cost with the electric, and then some of those capital improvements at the end of the year.
Comments or questions from council?
I'd like to make a motion to update the line that currently says human relations to commissions.
You know what? I think it was there in the last ordinance, and the one that I must have used as a supplemental just didn't carry over, so I will make that adjustment. I apologize for the oversight.
Second?
Second.
I seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm not sure that would have happened by motion, but--
Were we doing the--
No, no, we're just doing the -- that was just, he made a motion.
Oh, gotcha.
We already have the motion. Anything else? Any other specific questions council members have about the supplemental? This is the second, well, it's first reading, but it's an emergency, so I will open the public hearing to comments or questions from citizens. Seeing and hearing none. We'll come back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, McQueen?
Yes.
Hemfling?
Yes.
Housh?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Wintra?
Yes. 2017-44.
Okay, this is an ordinance authorizing the annual transfer of funds and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa?
I'll take it. Okay, actually, Judy, I don't know how the title got switched on this one, but it was approving fourth quarter transfers.
You know what?
Instead of annual, it's confusing, because the next one is an annual, and this one is fourth quarter, and it was right on the agenda.
That, then that's entirely my error, and I was correcting the wrong thing, so we're changing the title to approving fourth quarter transfers.
Yep, just so it's, just so that that's clear.
Got it, yep, I'll change it.
So what this does is this ties in with the ordinance that was just read. If you took a look at the line for the general fund, there were transfers out, and this just outlines where that money was going to, because this has to be an action of council anytime you transfer money. So you'll see very clearly down towards the second, third of the page here, that there was $400,000 that's moved from the general fund to the facilities improvement fund, and then there was $4,812 to transfer to the guaranteed deposit fund, which will zero out the money that needs to go out for all those deposits. So that's a very, very easy ordinance there.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council? I'll open the public hearing for comments or questions from citizens. Seeing and hearing none. Judy, please call the roll.
Yes, Housh?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Hemfling?
Yes.
Wintra?
Yes. 2017-45.
And this is authorizing the annual transfer of funds and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Melissa?
Last one for me, I think. Okay, so this ordinance is the ordinance that is authorizing the transfers for 2018, so this actually ties into the 2018 budget. So anywhere where we were transferring money that was approved with that ordinance for the 2018 budget is outlined very clearly here. So we have a number of different transfers out from the general fund, and that total for the general fund transfers is $930,932. We are moving money from the electric fund into the electric improvement fund as part of that budget. That total is $50,000, as well as water fund, transfer from the water fund to the water improvement fund, and that total is also $50,000. And then the fourth and final transfer is from the sewer fund to the sewer improvement fund. That amount is also $50,000.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from council? I'll open the public hearing. Any comments or questions from citizens? Seeing and hearing none. Judy, please call the roll.
Hemfling?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Housh?
Yes.
Wintra?
Yes. Okay, 2017-46. We'll do this by title only also, but obviously, there'll be a longer discussion.
Okay, this is repealing Section 242.01 Composition Classification of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new Section 242.01 Composition Classification and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Patty, are you taking this on to start?
I can take it on to start, yes. So this is the Community Outreach Specialist for the Police Department that Chief and I have been working on with Kate Hamilton in conjunction through the Justice System Task Force. It was a recommendation that came from the task force that we started working on. Council has discussed it a couple of times. We've been working on the job description to kind of refine it a little bit, and this is, at the last meeting, council did approve-- And this is, at the last meeting, council did approve and want to move forward with this. So, this is the actual legislation that creates this position and adds it into the structure of the village personnel.
Okay.
We can answer specific questions, I'm sorry Judy, we can answer specific questions about the position and what it would entail if anyone has...
Right, just to explain the, explain the process and the ordinance, basically that this position wasn't part of the ordinances. Chief, or until a position is part of the village structure, nobody can hire a new position. So, this essentially sets the table for that position to be able to be advertised. I think that it certainly goes farther in the information that was provided by Chief Carlson with the job description and more details related to how the position is going to be paid for. Are we going to go to Brian next? Chief, would you like to come up and...
Well, I'm repeating my summary from last week, but I thought if you had questions, ask it out of your head. Good evening?
Good evening.
In response to the request from Justice System Task Force and council to create comprehensive outreach programs to our at-risk population, I've created, we've created the attached job description. And I thank you all for your help very much. It's difficult for officers to provide the community with the demand for continual outreach services. The more ability we have to spend time helping our at-risk population, including engaging them with area social services, the more positive the impact will be on the community as a whole. Understanding the concerns of the police department budget, in addition to the need for providing continuing crisis intervention and conflict resolution, I believe that replacing one of our available peace officer positions with this community outreach specialist will benefit the community and the department as a whole. We should consider this as a pilot program because it will be learning as we go. But the immediate benefit will be more community contact and officer assistance through a single source of direction created by the guidelines council has created and I've been tasked to facilitate. I'm excited about this potential for this position within the department and the community, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Council members, we have, I know that Brian and Judith have both been working on this.
Well, what I wanted to say were two things. One, I very much support this position. I brought the, you know, just the position that we had as of the last council meeting to the JSTF for input. And I want to give particular appreciation for Laura Kurlis, who basically, a lot of the language that we then brought to a meeting we had, that Brian and I had with Patty and Chief Carlson, is her language. And she, I thought, did a really good job of sort of fleshing out a little further the job description. And I think it's, I think it's very good, and I'm really happy. Chief is so committed to it. And the other thing that Brian and I did was, we did talk to the, one of the police social workers, I'm forgetting her name.
Mindy.
Mindy, friend of Kate Hamilton's, on the phone. That was really interesting. And I do think there's, you know, I had had the impression that our position would be quite a bit different than theirs. But in fact, I think they've got a lot of similarities. And the good thing about that is, the association and the folks in Illinois can be a real resource to the new person. It's not that different a concept, actually, was my impression, anyway. The other thing is, I was a little upset at the last council meeting that we were going to have an emergency piece of legislation that, you know, at the time I had said I didn't feel like it was quite ready. And I feel like it makes a lot of sense. I know Karen's, you know, this is the last council meeting for Karen and Jerry, and they're big supporters of this. But I would like us to, I would like, I would like to make a motion that we make this just a regular piece of legislation. That means there'll be a second reading in January. Our citizens will have an opportunity to see this more fleshed-out version of the position, and our new council members could sign in on it. It just concerned me a bit of how we were using emergency legislation. And so, that's the reason, we've had several pieces tonight. I think it's something we may need to look at because the point of two readings of ordinances is that the community has an opportunity to weigh in, and it has to do with transparency of our work. And so, I guess maybe now I'll just make a motion that we just make this regular piece of legislation rather than an emergency piece of legislation, which means the second reading would happen January 3rd.
Second, January 2nd.
Oh, second.
Well, I'll second the motion, and then I guess we can discuss...
I mean, I guess, I really wonder, we're not, we're not talking about the job description. We are talking about adding the words "community outreach specialist" to the ordinance. So, we're not even, we're not even saying, and if you, so if you all want to talk about, if you all want to talk about whether this job description works, I guess you can. But all that we're doing is adding three words to, we're adding a job to the ordinance and to the positions of the police department. I don't see where that requires a lot of community input or whether that, why that, we're trying to get it done before the end of the year so Chief can begin the advertising process. He can't even begin to advertise until this becomes a position. I fail to see why this is a two-reading situation. And when you've got legislation, you know, you made, you comment about the other emergency legislation. Melissa doesn't know until the end of the year when, what bill she's going to have to pay. There is no way to have the supplement, the final supplemental appropriation be anything but an emergency ordinance. So, I don't want there to be implications that somehow we've got this rush of legislation at our last meeting of the year that we actually do need to get things cleared up, and it's the only meeting we can do it at.
So, which are we voting on now?
We're voting on just saying that we're going to add an outreach specialist.
No, but I mean Judith made a motion, and then Brian seconded it, so...
Well, we're, yeah, we're, I guess we're voting on whether we're going to do that. We're going to extend it or just doing it as a single reading.
Okay.
After we discuss it, though.
Right.
I don't know if there's any input from community members.
Well, I, before that, you know, and I also look at this the same way because it does give the opportunity for changes to the job description. But it's basically putting that position as being part of the rest of the positions that we have here in the village. And I feel that, you know, there will be a lot of opportunity for the new council to look at and come to agreement on what the job description is going to be before it's closed. I have to agree with Karen, we need to get it on the books that there is that position.
I mean, I would also say, I am not sure at this point why, why council would need to...
Why don't we just vote?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Let's be clear, we're voting on the motion that Judith...
Yes, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, aye.
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 Okay, so now we're going back to, to that we are going to read it as an emergency. What we just decided is that we are going to do one reading. We're going to declare it an emergency. And what we're doing is adding the position to, to the village organizational chart. Any comments, discussion about that?
Well, I support this, but, and I also wanted to say that whomever worked on tightening up the job description, which I understand, we're not voting on the job description, but I appreciate the work that whoever did. I think that it made it a stronger, stronger job position statement, and it did address a concern that Lisa had mentioned about the degree requirement.
Yeah, and I also want to reiterate, I really thought the discussion with the police social worker was very enlightening. And I think we've all said from, you know, the get-go that we are, you know, really excited about this position. And she reiterated just what a, what a game changer this was going to be. Really, Illinois is the only state that has this concept of a police social worker. So, it's pretty important that Yellow Springs is doing this.
And I would like to say, you know, I think we're all sitting here, the last meeting was a little, there was disagreement at the last meeting. It appears that there's been a lot of research, there's been a lot of work done on this. Brian and Judith have had the opportunity to talk to the social worker. Chief has been incredibly patient, working, and Patty, working with the JSTF, working with council members individually. It appears that we are now looking at a, at a job description that at least the five of us sitting here approve of. So, I realize we aren't really voting on this, but I would like to give Chief license to go with this job description so that he can get this advertised, and he doesn't have to wait until January 2nd where there may be changes, again, to what he's thought he was going to do. I, I'm uncomfortable with us sitting here, you know, saying that this, that this job description that we all have agreed to is potentially up for more debate, just because two new people are sitting here.
And I would like to say too, Karen, that Brian has pointed out when he, when he talks about this position, that we expect it to evolve.
Right.
We expect it to change a little bit as we get into this, and this person comes on board and begins the work. And this position, it is a new position, and it will evolve a little bit. And there will be some work to be done in changing the description as we go. And so, I just want to make it clear that I don't think either Brian or myself thinks that every single detail of this job description is set in stone. That's, you know, we understand that there are going to be some changes made, but we can't really make those changes until we get someone out in the field doing this and understand the nuances that are going to be needed to actually be the positive influence in the community that we want it to be.
You know, I don't want to belabor that because I do know that that is not really what we're sitting here deciding. But that is my strong hope that we, that council gives Brian the ability to hire the person. When it comes down to it, it's that person that is going to determine how successful this role is. This is a very individual, it's going to be a very individualized thing. It's, and I really trust Brian. I think he knows what this, the kind of person this community would support and is looking for and is needed here in this community. So, I would personally like to give him the, my vote of confidence that I trust that he will hire, do a good hire, that he will follow through, he will do what needs to be done, and council will be on, will follow through as they need to, to make sure that the position functions as it needs to. So, I hope that there isn't a lot of continued belaboring of this position.
Are you suggesting we need to pass the resolution, or what?
I don't know, I don't know if there is a next step. Chris, is there a step?
Well, okay, Judy. It seems to me that where we are is similar to the Taser policy, where the council is indicating that they would want input in public discussion as to the, how the position is going to evolve. So, I think that you could put a resolution forward that just indicates that changes in the job description will be, allow for input from council.
I would think that a motion would be...
Yeah, a motion would be fine, too.
A motion to, what, to allow...
To accept the job description.
To accept the job description as it stands now, to allow the chief to publicize the job opening?
Yes, but I think that there's another piece of that, too, which is that this is a pilot program, which recognizes that there may be a need to change the job description.
That there is, that this is a pilot program, and that the job description may change as the person gets hired and as the position evolves.
And that you would, and the motion then would be to have the chief make a report to discuss the program. I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
He can make continued reports in his updates to council.
Okay, well, I will make a motion that council approve the job description for the outreach coordinator as currently proposed so that the chief may advertise the position with the understanding that this is a pilot program and that the job description will evolve as the person is hired and begins to work, and that the chief of police will be making regular reports on how that position is functioning and any changes that are occurring within that position.
Second.
Okay, and so we're allowed to discuss. I mean, I do just want to highlight, you know, I think my understanding what Judith is talking about here is just, this is really the first time we've seen this job description in this form. So, I'm probably going to vote in support of this motion. But, you know, I do want to say that, you know, the point here is really that it took us a while to get it together, and, you know, this is the first time we've seen it all. I'm very happy with where we're at, but I think, you know, the point that Judith is raising is an appropriate one, so.
Okay. Are we ready to take, any, wait, is this an ordinance? Yeah, it is an ordinance.
You already voted on that.
We already voted, okay, so we're voting now on...
We have somebody that wants to say something.
We have citizen.
Lisa.
Well, you first, you were going to vote on the motion. Are you waiting to vote on the motion to allow...
Well, we seconded it, right?
Yeah, and so we're having discussion now about, okay. Lisa.
Thank you. I just have an encouragement for council as a community member around the use of the word pilot. I really appreciate, Patty, what you said about the program evolving and the position evolving. As a person who's worked as an employee for new positions that have been both called pilot and also just called new positions, what I've seen is that when programs are called pilot, it comes forward with a lack of confidence. Or like, when things get a little rough, the first time they're like, "Well, that was a pilot. That didn't work, we're going to go on," rather than to say, "This is a new position that will change over time because it's a new position to meet the needs of the community." So, I would really make an encouragement that, that the word pilot isn't one that's used when talking about the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I think that's very well said. Thanks. Kevin?
Thank you, and I would certainly second what...
Would you state your name?
Hi. Kevin Stokes.
Sorry, Lisa.
A mere community member. But I would second what Lisa just said. I actually, as an employee of ANIAC, I just took on a new person from another department. And we have a hard 30-day evaluation period from the time she starts reporting to my department. And it is a new position. I actually combined two positions. So, myself and the person who's director of the department that she's permanently assigned to will meet after 30 days and do some more fleshing out. So, I think that's probably something else we can consider. I know we've already talked about the phrase, probably, "regular reports." I think we ought to have a hard either 30, 60, or 90-day evaluation period where, again, not a pilot, but this new position. And there's really nothing that grand about a new position. It happens all the time. So, I think we're overthinking it just a bit. But it's a new position, and you'll have a hard, again, evaluation period. And we just go from there.
Thanks, Kevin. Patty, could you speak to, okay, Dave, oh, sorry, I interrupted your stretch. Go ahead.
My wife does it all the time. David Turner, this is a dead horse. It's not breathing, pilot exploratory, whatever you want. I mean, probationary, pick a word or a phrase. All of the job descriptions that we've seen in the Justice System Task Force and this one are really saying the same thing. There are a lot of specific but vague social work kind of things. No offense to anybody who writes these things, but, and I'm reading through it and saying, "We'll update and provide information about this long list of things." And whatever they choose in the long list of things is going to be what they choose, and that's what the job will be. So, you guys could come up with 20 more descriptions and they're all... So, you guys could come up with 20 more descriptions and they're all going to be the same. And at our last task force meeting, we agreed on the text that we had, and now there's a different one that's got more words in it, and it's saying the same thing. So you guys need to defecate or get off the pot.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, well, I am going to interject on that. I think this job description is very different in that it highlights target groups that we're looking at, and it's a lot more specific, so I don't agree with that. I mean, I think that this has really fleshed it out in a way that makes it a lot clearer what we want out of this position, and so I don't think that the former description did that.
Okay, thanks. Patty, could you discuss probationary periods?
Yes, every position in the village with a new hire, whether the position is new or simply the person is new, has a six-month probationary period, at least. So, this position will be evaluated at the end of the six months, and the person in that position will be evaluated at the end of the six months as to be, whether to be released from probation. So, every position in the village has that as a standard.
Okay. And I think, you know, chief, it sounds like chief will be reporting more frequent, would be reporting more frequently than that.
Yes.
And certainly, as a new position, it will be evaluated on a regular basis because how else is it going to happen? To get it, just to get it off the ground. So, okay, so I'm trying to, so we're now in the position where we're going to vote, do a voice vote on whether we're going to...
Mary Ann's motion.
The resolution, or motion, just a motion about accepting.
And minus the pilot word.
Yes. Did you get that, Judy? Just take out the word pilot.
Oh, absolutely. Got it word for word.
Okay. Without the word pilot, though.
Without the word pilot.
That's why we have video recording.
Yes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Did we actually vote on, I don't think we voted on the ordinance yet, did we?
No, you did not.
No, no.
Okay.
Figure all this other stuff out first.
And you do, yeah, you do need to open the public hearing on the...
Right. So I will open the public hearing on the ordinance 2017-46, which is adding the position, simply adding the position to the organizational chart. Any public comment? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Judy, please call the roll.
Before you do, before you do that, I don't object to adding the position. Again, I'm going to voice my concern for the funding that the chief is willing to give up a position, and I think that, you know, council, the new council needs to look at how we're going to fund that position in the future. And my concern is always for the safety of our officers on a daily basis, and cutting the position, to me, from our department, is more to me of a safety concern versus a budgetary concern. The community wants the outreach, but they also, I feel, want to look out for the safety of the folks that are protecting us. So, I just urge the new council to scrub the whole budget and come up with a way to fund this activity, but also not take that option away from the chief to hire another officer if he sees fit, so.
Chief, could you address current staffing? Because I just want to make sure clear to the community that we're not losing an officer.
Correct. This is basically filling that void or position from our task force entry. We're currently down three positions. In fact, Saturday, we tested for two full-time positions. We had nine qualified applicants. It was a good day.
Wow, that's great.
And Jerry, I feel the same way. I also feel that, I believe, good police officers, we are social workers. That's what we do. The majority of our work is assisting those in need. In Yellow Springs, a small percentage of the majority of our work is criminal. As I've mentioned before, a large percentage of our training is criminal, and a small percent is in social work. I see this as helping to balance the scales a little bit in what we do. We haven't had that position filled in quite some time. With the addition of the two full-time officers, we'll be able to be at the staffing level that myself and Sergeant Knapp and Watson feel comfortable with.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I did open the public hearing. Okay, Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. House?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Hemfling? I'm abstaining because of the emergency nature of the legislation only.
Winthrop?
Yes. Next, we've got ordinance 2017-47, again, as an emergency, just by title only, Judy.
Okay, this is repealing Appendix A Fee Schedule of Part 12 Planning and Zoning Code, Title 4 zoning of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new section Appendix A Fee Schedule and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Melissa?
No.
Patty?
I have this one. All this does, it simply adds the $25 fee to the fee schedule for those who are going to have an Airbnb or transient lodging unit of some kind on their property, be it in your home, in an accessory dwelling unit. It's a $25 fee, and it's not currently provided for in the fee schedule in a specific way. And since becoming, in a couple of weeks here, it's going to become necessary for folks to have those permits, we need to have a fee schedule, have it added to the fee schedule, so they know what it's going to cost them.
Okay. Melissa, could you give us an update on the online process?
Well, I have done my best to take the online form submission as far as I can. I'm still having a few bugs that I'm hoping that the website company that we use can fix those. I had a conversation with them probably two weeks ago and gave them my list of issues that I was having that they did recognize were not on our end but on their end, so I'm kind of at their mercy right now. So, the capability is there, the functionality is a bit sketchy right now. So, we do have the online form, or we do have this form for the permit online, so that you could print that and bring it in, fax it, email it, whatever you would like, to Denise in Planning and Zoning, but the online submission functionality is still a little problematic.
And do we have the ability to take credit cards online?
We do not right now with that. We take credit cards online for utility payments, but that's a different vendor that's associated with our utility, so we do not have that yet. I can look into it, but for the number of payments that we would probably be taking in, I'm not sure if it would be worthwhile. If we were a bigger entity, it might, but I can still look into it, though, to see. I know our website does have that capability, but I'd have to look into it, but I can do that.
Okay. So just, and just to be clear, this particular document and this payment would go to Denise Swinger up in the plan, second floor Planning and Zoning Office?
Correct.
Okay. Comments or questions from council? This is an emergency, so I will open the public hearing. Seeing and hearing, no comments.
I did have one question. This is an emergency, so that we can put this into effect as of January 1st.
Yes. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. McQueen?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Hemfling?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes. Now, the Resolution 2017-54.
Okay, title only?
Yes.
Okay, this is approving replacement of the current Village of Yellow Springs mayor and council nominating petition with the Ohio Secretary of State's Petition Form 3-0.
Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Are you going to take this, Brian?
Sure, yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty brief. We talked about this at earlier meetings. The Yellow Springs sort of unique nominating petition form had a variety of things that are not required under the Ohio Revised Code, such as needing to get it notarized. So, we want to make sure that we make it as easy as possible for folks to run for public office, and what this will do is basically adopt the ORC form, which will also align with the instructions that you get at the Board of Elections, so that it will be a lot easier to follow. And I'm very happy that we're going to move to this format.
Any comments or questions? This is a resolution. Any comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from citizens? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, sorry, Dave.
The, I would suggest that you look at the council petition, too. It's faded. The copies that I got were, you know, hard to read, and people were putting dates and signatures.
This is the council, council and mayor, yeah.
Oh, I thought this was just mayor. Never mind, you got it. And they said, "If you get a chance, ask him to fix it."
Yeah, which we're doing. Thanks.
I wrote "mayor" and "fucking mayor."
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
How do you want this? Do you want to read this in full? Do you want this to be read in full?
Sure.
Read it in full.
All right. This is supporting the Yellow Springs-Clifton Connector Trail. Whereas the Yellow Springs-Clifton Connector Trail is a recreational trail envisioned by a group of local leaders, including representatives from the villages of Yellow Springs and Clifton, Green County Regional Planning, Yellow Springs Chamber of Commerce, Rails to Trails Conservancy, Miami Township, Green County Parks and Trails, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and the Ohio Department of Transportation. And whereas the proposed trail will connect the Village of Yellow Springs to the Village of Clifton along a route that would be in close proximity and provide access to the Clifton Gorge State Nature Preserve, John Bryan State Park, and Glen Helen Nature Preserve. And whereas the proposed Yellow Springs-Clifton Connector Trail aligns with the Village of Yellow Springs' long-term goals, promoting quality of life and livability in and around the village, as well as reducing the carbon footprint of our community. And whereas the Village of Yellow Springs advocates and encourages healthy and active lifestyles around active modes of transportation, as well as accessibility for people of all ages and abilities. And whereas 2017 has been designated Ohio's Year of the Trail by the House of Representatives, Resolution 105, in response to resolutions adopted by the Green County Board of Commissioners, as well as the villages of Yellow Springs and Clifton. And whereas more than 1 million individuals, both local residents and visitors, annually utilize Green County's growing paved trails network. And whereas countless individuals and families visit the Clifton Gorge State Nature Preserve, John Bryan State Park, and Glen Helen Nature Preserve, as well as the unique tourism destinations and events in the villages of Clifton and Yellow Springs. And whereas recreational trails revitalize and invigorate communities and help support economic development and growth, environmental sustainability, and public health. And whereas in the interest of health, safety, and well-being of the general public within and surrounding our community, including that of visitors, the proposed Yellow Springs- Clifton Connector Trail represents a valuable asset and legacy for generations to come. Now therefore be resolved that. Section 1 Yellow Springs Village Council does hereby proclaim its full support of the Yellow Springs-Clifton Connector Trail, and will facilitate the process of engineering, design, and construction in all ways possible, including appropriating $10,000 to help fund a preliminary engineering study that will determine the trail route and estimate the cost of the project.
Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Brian, we read it in full. It's pretty self-explanatory, but...
Yes, I think it says it.
We have the mayor of Clifton here. I'm not sure if you'd like to...
I don't have any prepared statements. My name's Alex Beery. I'm the mayor of Clifton. I'm here representing the Village of Clifton, as it were. And I think Judy read that resolution beautifully. The Village of Clifton and our council passed a similar resolution back in October, and we've been working with those local leaders that you mentioned, from Miami Township, Ken LeBlanc over in Green County Regional Planning, and several others. This isn't a vanity project for me and Clifton, and I'm not an avid bicyclist, per se. This really is about the quality of life issues that were mentioned in that resolution. We don't have all the answers. For me, this project started two years ago when ODOT decided they were going to resurface, which, full-depth reclamation, resurfacing of State Route 343. I called a meeting with District 8 in Lebanon, and Chris Mutcher with Miami Township attended that meeting, and we were there just to talk about widening the shoulder of State Route 343 to accommodate some of the bicyclists that were already using the route, and we thought that was in everybody's best interest. ODOT already had the funding, obviously, for an FDR resurfacing of the road. Well, we were told that, in fact, the road has nine-foot lanes, prevailing specs actually called for 11-foot lanes, so to even add six inches to the shoulder, we would have to add four feet to the road. Once you add four feet to the road, you're getting into environmental impact studies, you're getting into Army Corps of Engineer specs on waterways, et cetera, et cetera. So it was, it was quite the brick wall, and we retreated. Then with the Year of the Trail coming on, this project again resurfaced, and with the collective energies from all the various leaders in the overlapping municipalities, Miami Township, and all the common interests that we share, I think this has gained quite a bit of steam in the last few months. We've had some very productive meetings, but we cannot pinpoint all the various pinch points and, you know, hurdles and challenges that we're going to face if we don't get the engineers involved for the feasibility study. All of you understand that feasibility studies are kind of part of Phase 1 in these types of projects. So Clifton has contributed $3,000, and that, again, was with our resolution back in October put on the table. It's substantially less than $10,000, understandably. However, it represents quite a chunk of our general funds, so I think $10,000 is not too much to ask of you today. We also plan to take that $13,000 and leverage it towards some grants that we think are available, which would give us $26,000, and we have been told, I understand, by Tool Design is the company that's going to be getting involved here on the feasibility level, that $26,000 is going to get us well on the way to getting into these meteor phases of the project. So, that's why I'm here tonight, and I appreciate your consideration on this resolution.
Alex, can you just highlight what we mean by a feasibility study?
Yeah, so feasible, so I would love to answer technical questions, but I can't. You know, I'm not a waterways engineer. I don't work with the companies that can get involved with all the ins and outs. We are looking at the proposed route. State Route 343, as I mentioned, would be the quickest Point A to Point B route as the crow flies. However, if you traverse State Route 343, you'll notice that there are environmental easements, Tecumseh Land Trust easements along that route. Glen Helen is on part of that route. ODNR represents both the State Nature Preserve in Clifton and John Bryan State Park, and those have all sorts of different implications. We are looking with ODNR at a couple of existing mountain bike trails that take us all the way to the parking lot on State Route 343, which is part of the park system. ODNR is, to my eye, very willing and able to engage us in this project. They've been, they've been really thoughtful. But the feasibility study is really what lays out the different legs of the project. We can't do any fundraising. We can't, again, answer technical questions. We can't begin to look at things that need mitigation until we have a feasibility study that takes into account, you know, those items, the engineering, and several other, the hurdles that'll need to be crossed. It's not an easy project. This is certainly, I would put this under your pie-in-the-sky tabs. However, and again, that's, if we had a vacated rail bed that was a 3% grade, it would have been paved already. All the low-hanging fruit has been, has been plucked. You know, that happened 25 years ago. Those trails are a great success when we talk about livability and we talk about smart growth. That's, that's really my main interest here, is smart use of public spaces, as well as the recreational value. And so, again, if we can get some money on the table, it really gets us started into the brass tacks areas of this project, so we can start to phase in and get out of the brainstorming pie-in-the-sky portion of it. And as I mentioned, we've already engaged ODNR, ODOT engineers. We've engaged all the local leaders that overlap, and because this is the Year of the Trail, and because the Village of Clifton is encompassed by Miami Township, as well as the Village of Yellow Springs, including all the unincorporated areas and the rural areas between them... areas and the rural areas between them, I think we have quite a common interest in promoting this, this corridor.
Thanks. Brian, anything you wanted to add?
Um, yeah, I just want to reiterate what Alex was referring to in terms of leveraging those dollars is, I've had a conversation with the Yellow Springs Community Foundation. They in particular are looking for projects that involve the township, so they're very interested in this. And, and again, highlighting that, you know, the nature of this feasibility study, as Alex said, is to basically get a price tag on the project to figure out then how we can go after funding to get it constructed.
And DeMorse, I mean, you get, you need to know what that route is. I mean, there's still some uncertainty on exactly what the route is, but it's going to be a lot of off-road, so, off of 343. So I think that's some of the question. I would also like to encourage you to reach out to Green County Parks and Green County itself for some potential funding. And if, if enough funding isn't gathered, I'm assuming that this expenditure won't happen. I mean, basically, this, the money won't be spent until, until enough of it is gathered, I assume.
That's correct. Appropriating the money is not writing a check.
For the engineering, right.
Yeah, we're just asking for the, the financial backing behind that support in the resolution.
Yeah, and in fact, with the Clean Ohio Fund, which we mentioned is one of the funding sources, they have a two-year lookback. So any money that you invest in a project can be part of the matching for, there's a 25% matching that goes with those grants. So this can be part of that.
And probably, I mean, this is a little bit more, probably the project lead needs to be determined sometime. That, the group probably needs to figure out who's going to funnel the money, who's going to write the check, who's going to hold the contract with the consultant. I, I don't know if that's been discussed, but.
Well, that's correct. And there's, no co-op has been formed legally or formally or otherwise, and, you know, there are quite a bit of people involved. But I think that's definitely a next step.
I just think this is such an important, an important project, so I absolutely support it. Any other comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from citizens? Mr. Donnell.
Thanks, Alex. Thank you.
All I would like to say, as a former member of the Bicycle Enhancement Committee and the Northern Gateway Committee, this has been a project that has been on the village books for probably close to 20 years. And the commitment that the Bicycle Enhancement Committee made to this was part of a four-ease project for getting bicycle enhancement status for the village. One of those conditions actually resulted in connecting a purr to 343. The work that that particular group did resulted in getting, one of the conditions matched, which was putting in the stoplight at Cemetery and 343 and State Route 68. So I think that, you know, our community certainly has been committed to this for going on 20 years. So it's finally good to see that there's more momentum in bicycling, and, you know, I think we were before our times, but I fully support it.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Twenty seventeen dash fifty-six.
And how do you want this one?
Well, how do you, just read it by, read it in full.
Okay, this is adopting a complete streets policy for the village of Yellow Springs. Whereas in addition to traditional motorized transportation, citizens of Yellow Springs regularly choose active modes of transportation, including walking and bicycling, as well as the use of mobility devices and public transit. And whereas the village of Yellow Springs has made a commitment to create a safe transportation network that allows citizens to use a varied array of modes of transportation through the adoption of a complete streets policy, so that all current and projected users of the public right of way may safely and conveniently reach, reach their destination. And whereas the village of Yellow Springs recognizes that a complete streets policy helps to ensure that all users and modes of transportation are considered during the design and implementation of phases of project. And whereas in addition to design and implementation, a meaningful complete streets policy includes consideration of education and enforcement initiatives. And whereas the adoption and implementation of a complete streets policy will encourage and facilitate walking, transit, and mobility device using, use, and biking, all of which have health, economic, and environmental benefits. Now therefore, council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section one, the village of Yellow Springs does hereby express its intent to implement and continually develop a complete streets policy to be used in all future planning and construction endeavors within the village limits.
Thank you. Can I get a motion please?
So move.
Second. Okay. Brian?
Uh, yeah, I'll just highlight a few things. A complete streets policy is, you know, akin to a dig-wants policy, in the sense that it makes you think at the beginning of the project about the needs of all users and all modes of transportation. It certainly is in line with what we believe in as a village. It doesn't prescribe any specific things that you have to do, but rather it's the, you know, out-front thinking about ways that whenever we do anything to a street, that we think about our pedestrians, our bicyclists, our folks with varying abilities. And I will also mention that we will be, if we pass this policy, one of the very few communities in all of Ohio that has a complete streets policy. The last policy that was passed was by the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission in 2011. So this is very innovative, and it does tie into what the state is now talking about, which is a state-level complete streets policy, to really recognize the importance of non-motorized transportation.
And I would like to recognize Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for their support in this. We've used their resources. We've used their policy as a, as a template for this, and they've also done some educational pieces, so, which, which I think is really important.
Yeah, we also got some great feedback. I want to mention Barbara Mann in particular, who highlighted the needs of our senior population, and we've had a lot of other folks that, you know, drive scooters around town and that sort of thing. So this really got a lot of great input. Laura Kurlis again gave some great feedback, as well as the Yellow Springs Act of Transportation Committee. So I think this could evolve further, but it's, it's had a lot of great input.
I have a question about implementation. When we have a development come online, we have Cresco, for example, building, will presumably have some development on the Glass Farm, any major development project, how will this and how will this policy impact any kind of housing, industrial, commercial development?
Right. I would, well, I was going to say that, I mean, this has to go to Planning Commission. I mean, this, this needs to be integrated into the comprehensive plan. It needs to be run by Planning Commission. It probably should have been prior to this. It would have been nice, actually, to have come with Planning Commission support, but I think it can, it can certainly be the reverse. This is us developing policy that we then pass along to Planning Commission. But absolutely, they need to be on board, and they have been doing it. I was at the two, I was at three Planning Commission meet, or two Planning Commission meetings where three projects were discussed. The Cresco project, and it was discussed that they get, that they include bike racks. The, how the streets are working in that development has already been, been included. Glass Farm, let's see, I'm trying to think of what, what the other one was.
Fire station.
The firehouse. It was discussed about the firehouse, and it was also discussed with the brewery expansion down on 68, down south on 68, that they will actually be providing bicycle access and, and bike racks and things. So, but it, it really does start with Planning Commission, because all of these proposals, it needs to be in the packet of information that Denise is providing for potential developments so that the developers, which would be the comp plan, which, so that developers know what to expect. And then it has to be something that is on the checklist for Planning Commission when they review a development plan.
And, and Mary Ann, Denise and I have been attending the training. I don't remember, Melissa, if you were available or not, yeah. But we've been attending the trainings and things that have been provided through M V R P C. So we both understand, you know, how this needs to work and what information needs to be passed on to, to developers. It will, the next step will be, in fact, to let Planning Commission look at it, and as they review the comprehensive plan, which is something they're hoping to do in 2018, or at least to start on, this will be part of that, to be integrated into the comprehensive plan.
I, I do support this, and at the same time, I, I just want to understand, and I guess have Planning Commission understand, how this would get implemented in any kind of development, so that if we're going to be making requests of developers, that we have effective solutions for them, options for them, as opposed to putting up a lot of hurdles.
Well, I mean, it almost feels as if, and speaking of what you're, it almost feels as if there needs to be some sort of an interim piece, because Planning Commission really needs to be looking at, at what these interconnections are, because a developer's not going to know what the village is expecting. So, so it does really feel like there is going to be potentially a major planning piece that needs to happen here. Wouldn't you?
Yes, well, and I hope that we have a representative from Planning Commission on the Advisory Committee for the Act of Transportation Plan.
Yeah, it seems like.
Because that would, that's where we'll define a lot of this.
And I think it also goes to staff, though, because a lot of these things are street resurfacing. A lot of, a lot of things can be accomplished just when a street is resurfaced. Maybe it's, it's striped differently. And so, so this really has to become embedded in, with the staff when they do any utility, mostly road work, work in the parks, those kinds of things.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, my hope is that it will actually, given our affordability crises in the village, that this will not increase costs, but that they, that in some, that there will be many instances where it could decrease costs in terms of our transportation system. For example, the issue of sidewalks, you know, addressing the issue of sidewalks in a different way, so.
Comments or questions from citizens? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Resolution twenty seventeen dash fifty-seven.
And I'll just do this by the nonexistent title, which is this is approving a pay increase for the village manager.
Well, why don't you read, just read it in full.
Okie dokie. Whereas council has reviewed the performance of the village manager in accordance with the terms of her employment agreement, and whereas council has determined that based on the village manager's performance, retaining the services of Patty Bates as village manager is in the continued best interests of the village. And whereas council has determined an increase in the village manager's salary is warranted, now therefore council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section one, Patty Bates is awarded a 3% pay increase in accordance with her employment agreement with an effective date of January 1, 2018.
Can I get a motion please?
So move.
Second.
Okay. We're happy with Patty. We're very happy. She's made my last few years very enjoyable and comfortable and successful, so I appreciate it, and I think council all agrees. Unfortunately, she won't be here for much, another 18 months.
Another 18 months.
And then she's retiring, which is great for her, not great for the village, but great for her.
Well, you just, you know, it may be great for the village. Maybe the person who comes after me is a, is a wonderful, incredible manager, and you'll be happy to see me gone, but for now, you're stuck with me, so thank you.
Well, and, and I do want to highlight, if anyone's paid any attention at all to what's been going on in the village for the last couple of years, you would have noticed that a lot of things have gotten done that had been kicked down the road for a while, and it's just incredible. And, you know, honestly, you know, if it wasn't for Patty's leadership, as well as a great village team, we would not be able to accomplish everything that we have.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and I want to echo what, what people have said, council members have said tonight about my staff, because this is hands down, far and away, the best and most professional and talented staff I have ever worked with in my 30-plus years.
Hey.
So.
And what about the council?
And the council. I was saving my council comments for the next couple of resolutions.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Do you want me to read the next one, Judy?
I can read it.
Okay. Patty, why don't you read it?
Are you kidding me?
You want to read it?
Are you just, she wants hers?
No, we're doing hers.
We're doing that, we're doing that next, after this.
We're doing Judy's.
Judy, you want to read it, or you want me to read it?
Oh, I'm fine reading it.
That's why I was trying to get away with it by type. But do you, but do you, and you're, you've got your number, okay?
I do, I do. So whereas council does review the performance of the council clerk in accordance with the terms of her employment agreement, and whereas council has determined that based on the clerk's performance, retaining the services of Judy Kintner as council clerk is in the continued best interests of the village. And whereas council has determined that an increase in the council clerk's salary is warranted, now therefore council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section one, Judy Kintner is further awarded a $2 million, oh, I'm sorry, 2.5% pay increase in accordance with her employment agreement with a date effective January 1, 2018.
That's a good trash.
Can I get a motion please?
So move.
Second.
Ditto for Judy, and she's, she's amazing. I mean, and obviously for me, the last four years have been very much helped by her in the previous, however many, I don't remember how many, that she and I actually worked together. So Judy has a lot of work to do. She gets it done very effectively, and, and she serves the community and council very well. You're here.
Ditto.
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks again, Judy, for.
You're most welcome.
Your patience and guidance and, and everything you do for us and the community.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have.
Out of order.
Yeah, really. Now we have twenty seventeen dash sixty-one, which is so exciting.
Absolutely.
Title only, please. It's titles long enough.
Authorizing the village manager to engage the law firm of Walter Haberford jointly with the Regional Income Tax Agency and other municipalities for the purpose of challenging the constitutionality of amendments to Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revised Code relating to municipal income tax.
Can I get a motion please?
So move.
Second.
Chris, are you going to take this one? Please.
Okay. Without any wa, without waiving any attorney-client confidences, at the last council meeting, we discussed potential litigation in the executive session. At that time, we were aware that there, it was one lawsuit that had been filed in regard to House Bill 49. House Bill 49 is another attempt by the state to take control from local municipalities in certain matters, which is a continuing effort by Columbus to interfere with municipalities' home rural rights. In this case, the state is attempting to centralize the collection of net profit taxes from businesses, charge a 5% fee, and then purportedly disperse that money back to the community. The, at the time that we had the executive session, we are aware that the law firm Frost Brown had undertaken to represent a number of municipalities, and they were going to charge a minimal retainer, but it was going to be a pay-per, pay-for-service lit, piece of litigation. Last Thursday, Rita, which the village of Yellow Springs is a member of, and they collectively administer our income tax program, filed their own lawsuit on behalf of its members in Lorraine County. There are, at the moment, 21 named municipalities. Rita did that, filed the lawsuit without having contacted all of its members, in part because they perceived that there wasn't time, because there had already been one lawsuit filed. So they wanted to get their lawsuit filed, let its membership know, and then allow members to opt in. Whether the village opts into the litigation by name is what this resolution is about. However, the economics of the lawsuit are fundamentally different for the village than it would be had they joined in, had the village joined in the Frost Brown lawsuit. Rita is undertaking this litigation on behalf of its, all of its members, whether they opt into it being named party to the lawsuit or not. It's considered to be an administrative cost under the, under our participation in Rita's. In other words, there won't be any out-of-pocket expense for the village, or at least that's what they're telling us. The, this is a significant issue because of, again, it's another attempt by the state. We're seeing that with the mini cell towers. That litigation, by the way, has been somewhat successful. There is, Patty's received some updates, I have not yet through my circle, but Patty has, that that litigation is bearing some fruit in terms of what ultimately may go back to the state to pass some new legislation. So everyone's hopeful that, that these lawsuits will cause some discussion to occur that will help protect the interests of the village. But the short version is that this resolution would authorize Patty to sign the retain- But the short version is that this resolution would authorize Patty to sign the retainer agreement with the law firm, with Rita, and to participate by name as a defendant, pardon me, as a plaintiff in the litigation. Now, there's one other piece to this. Beginning at the next council meeting in January, welcome new council members, you're going to get this one quick. House Bill 49 also included some administrative changes to House Bill 5, which we passed in 2015, which changed the income tax process. Rita is recommending that we do some housekeeping cleanup to our existing legislation. And then there's another rub here, which is the way the House Bill 49 legislation was written, if municipalities do not enact the provisions that House Bill 49 has by January 31, 2018, in theory, the state could sanction the municipalities, which that sanction would most likely be some threat, real or actual, of trying to withhold monies that would otherwise be entitled to the municipality. The consensus seems to be, and I'm still fleshing this out, because I just learned about this three days ago, is that by participating as a named plaintiff in the litigation, and the attempt to get injunctive relief to prevent the state from implementing the law, would then allow those municipalities, Rita members, to not have to pass the legislation for the more draconian aspects of House Bill 49. So I planted the seeds there through our new members of council, and our council members who will be staying on, for what will happen in January's discussion. But for today's purposes, really all we're asking, with the recommendation from the solicitor's office, is to approve the resolution allowing Patty to sign off on the village so that it can participate in the litigation as a named plaintiff. Any questions?
And again, just to reiterate, you said at this point, there is no financial obligation for the village?
In my discussions with Rita's legal counsel, there would not be.
Even if we're a named plaintiff?
Correct. In fact, if we, if council opted not to participate by name, we would still be contributing to that administrative cost vis-à-vis our membership. But the key here is that there appears to be, the model is that there would be no dollars flowing out from the village to pay in the way that it would have had we joined in the Frost Brown-initiated litigation.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
And I mean, somehow we need to, this legislature is, the state legislature just seems determined to take money away from municipalities in whatever way they can, and OML, Ohio Municipal League groups, organizations, Rita, individual municipalities have been going to them, lobbying for the past couple of years, and it just doesn't seem to be helping. So I'm not sure what is going to change the, change the attitude toward municipal income tax, but in the state, but it's frustrating, because they are taking the money that citizens, that is set aside for us, so anyway.
Do you have a comment?
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
2017-59.
This is appreciation for Gerald Sims' six years of service as a council member. Whereas Gerald Sims has served with insight, compassion, and devotion on village council since his election in 2011 and again in 2015, and whereas both council and the village of Yellow Springs have benefited from his willingness to listen closely to all sides of the debate and to weigh them against the greater good, and whereas Mr. Sims brought an unprecedented level of interest and understanding to his role as an excellent employer, often working alongside the village crew or lending a hand during a power outage or storm, and whereas Mr. Sims embodied the principle of think before you speak and distinguished himself as a thoughtful participant in council debates. And whereas council wishes to honor Gerald Sims' commitment and service to the village of Yellow Springs, to village staff and to council, now therefore council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section one, Gerald Sims is hereby officially recognized for his devotion to his community as shown through his service on Yellow Springs Village Council. Section two, council for the village of Yellow Springs hereby advises relaxation and enjoyment of the first, second, and third Mondays of the month, as well as during the many hours you would have spent in assisting the village crew, helping during an emergency event, or talking with your constituents. Section three, council for the village of Yellow Springs will officially miss your presence at council table.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Third, fourth.
I responded, you know, then I spoke before I thought.
For the first time.
I just wanted to say that I've gotten to know Jerry these last two years, and he's a quieter member, but he is a very thoughtful and wise man and kind-hearted. We're going to miss him, definitely.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I want to elaborate on him getting out there in the mix with our crew. You know, I still remember the time I was going down West South College, and there's Jerry with the snow blower clearing the sidewalks, and he's been, you know, he's out there keeping Johnny company when the power goes out, and it's incredible. I've learned a lot as well, and Jerry, thanks so much for being a great mentor.
Maybe you'll have more time now.
That's right.
Yes, Jerry's been great to serve with, and it's, I'll miss him and everybody else, but Jerry's been an incredible addition for six years, and the community has benefited greatly from his long years of residency in the village, his connection to the schools, having served on the school board, and just brought a great deal of insight to council. And he definitely deserves the, deserves the relaxation break he's going to get.
And I would like to say, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary Ann.
No.
I would like to say, Jerry, thank you. You have, you have helped me, you have mentored me and counseled me, and I appreciate it very much, sharing your wisdom.
And if I could say something, short and so forth, I want to thank the village and the community members. I was fortunate that they had confidence in me to elect me to a four-year term, and then their confidence kind of waned a little bit, and they elected me to a two-year term. But I've fully enjoyed it. I have had no regrets from being a public official, but there are a few people that I really want to thank. Number one, Patty, for the job that she has done to make my job a little bit easier since she's been our village manager. But I also want to thank our staff, starting with our police department, that allowed me to ride with them, and it gave me a chance to get to know them and for them to know me, working with Johnny and his crew. And before Johnny, it was Kelly Fox. I found out what it was like to get down in the cold water, in the mud and dirt, and fix a water main break, so that our citizens in certain areas had water. Jason and his crew, and now Johnny's crew, I learned what it was to be cold on a long winter night as they cleaned the snow off of Ziny Avenue, so that when the businesses and the residences came down the next day, they didn't have to fear about slipping or falling on the ice of snow. Brad and his crew out at the water in the water plant, in the sanitary plant. It's a smelly job, but those guys go out there every day to make sure that our environment is safe from the runoff, from our waste and disposal. Melissa and the ladies downstairs in the finance area, I got to know some of the problems that they have, the frustrations that they get on the 15th and 16th of the month when the utility bills are due, and then have to face some of the scorn when we unfortunately have to cut off someone's utility. Ruth Ann, who's not here, she has been amazing when I call in, and maybe trivial things, but she either answers right away or she gets back to me. We can't function without the employees that we have. Now, there's one other thing I need to do, and I need to step outside and come right back in, but there's been two people that really have made my job easier and made it a pleasure, a pleasure to work and serve the village. That was it.
They're not here.
If my co had been outside, I would have ran home, but I didn't. First to Judy Kinnear. Whenever I called and need answers to anything, Judy was always there. I know sometimes I call her after hours, but she read her voice, you know, when she got back. Now, this is a small plant, because I know that you will continue to grow in your assignment as a village clerk, and so as that plant grows, you will continue to grow and mature. And for my friend in burden and crime, I have a big plant. And it's probably not big enough to represent all that you have done for the village. Karen was on council when I was elected and so forth, and she kind of taught me the ropes, and I really appreciate that. And she has had a difficult task, number one, being a council member, and number two, being president of council. She kept us online, she made sure we had all the information we needed to get the job done. So I do appreciate all that you've done.
Let's carry a big picture.
Thank you.
At least we're going out together.
This man got me on the GL. Because without a solicitor, you can't do what you need to do. This young lady, I was fortunate enough to interview her when we were looking for a finance director, and she really brought forward the enthusiasm of a young person. And I think she's grown as she's worked here and so forth, and Melissa, keep up the good work, and I'll follow your future.
Thank you.
She's made my life, plus she's also made the village's life a lot better. We got things done, and we will continue to do things. And please call me back the day that you decide to be really retired, because I want to be at that meeting. And Brian, we have one thing in common.
Besides your outfits?
When Brian came on board, I said, Brian, come on, I'm going to take you to dinner. And we kind of talked about where you're going to get yourself into. And when I decided that I wasn't going to run anymore, and my last meeting coming up, Brian said, hey, come on, I want to take you out to dinner, so I can kind of show you what you now need to be doing. Brian, I appreciate everything that you've done.
Thanks, Jerry.
And Mary Ann?
Jerry?
We haven't always agreed.
No.
But we have agreed. And one thing that, you know, she kind of taught me about nature, because Brian and Johnny can tell you a good story about what I thought of beavers.
No, they can't. No, they can't.
But, you know, it taught me something about nature, and I think one of the good things, why I didn't always agree with it, is we got a place now out at the glass farm where people can come and enjoy nature, and if it wasn't for the push and enthusiasm of Patty, I mean of.
Whoever she is.
Of Mary Ann, you know, we wouldn't have some of the things that we have. So Mary Ann, you know, keep fighting for the environment as you do, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And to Judith.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. Judith has been around probably almost as long as I have. When I first got on council, Judith was the president, and we had many challenges at that time, and Judith helped us get through that. Things did turn a little rough for her, and she had to take a break from council, but she decided to come back. And with any type of public body, you have to have those that disagree and those that agree. You have to have those that are willing to stand up for what they believe in and fight for what they believe in. But one thing I did learn from Judith is that everybody is important. Within the village, we need those areas and those housing units for those that may not be at the same level as some of us. She has taught me that. But the other thing that she also has taught me that, you know, we need to look for the future and, you know, keep doing what you're doing, okay?
Thank you.
And as I sat down, the village is going to have many challenges, and I think we had elected good people to carry on within council and so forth. But the challenge that I duly, I want to leave with the new council that's coming in, we do need housing. We need housing that not only will help those that are in need, or affordable housing, as you want to define it, but affordable housing also means that we need to attract a young up-and-coming that will help sustain the village in the future. So as the new council looks at housing, looks at the glass farm, looks at other areas, just remember that it takes both ends of the spectrum in order for us to succeed, and keep that in mind, that we do make a place out at the glass farm that will embrace and handle all that come behind us. With that. With that, I'm glad to now go home and rest, but I am sad to leave all the great people, not only in this room, on the council, but in the community that I have meant, that I have worked for, and they have supported. Thank you.
Do you still need to vote on the resolution? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think Mr. Byrne says something to say.
Jerry, I've been on council for four years, actually three years, eleven months, and you've been on council, but I'm not gonna let you get away that soon.
Oh, wow.
Because we have got you a jacket.
Oh, nice.
As an honorary crew member. And anytime you want to come and help the crew, you're more than welcome.
So speaking of which, it was, the water main break is fixed?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. So if you live on, near Allen, somewhere down there, you're happy right now. You can take a shower. Okay, resolution, we did just vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, sixty, resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty.
All right, this is appreciation for Karen Wintrow's twelve years of service as a council member. Whereas Karen Wintrow has served with energy, compassion, and dedication on village council for twelve years, since her election in two thousand five, in two thousand nine, and again in two thousand thirteen. And whereas both council and the village of Yellow Springs have benefited from Karen's ability to navigate the waters of controversy with skill and fairness. And whereas in her role as council president, which she held during two thousand seven and again from two thousand thirteen until the present, Karen has been a valued leader and colleague in many diverse debates and difficult decisions. And whereas Karen brought a passion for intelligent and responsive development of commerce to the table, which has positively impacted the village as a whole. And whereas council wishes to honor Karen's commitment and service to the village of Yellow Springs, to village staff, and to council. Now therefore, council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section one, Karen Wintrow is hereby officially recognized for her devotion to her community as shown through her service on Village, Yellow Springs Village Council. Section two, council for the village of Yellow Springs hereby advises relaxation and enjoyment of the first and third Mondays of the month, as well as during the many hours you would have spent in research, reading, consultation, meetings with staff, and preparation for council meetings. Section three, council for the village of Yellow Springs will officially miss your presence at council table.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. So, I mean, everything Jerry said, I mean, and I'm not gonna go through, I'm not gonna, I just can't take the time to thank everyone, but what he said really was on point for how he spoke about every council member and every staff member. I mean, this staff is really second to none, and it has been from the beginning. And since Patty's been here, it has really pulled together. I mean, the amount of work we've gotten done has been amazing. We're ready to launch a new water plant, which is something that was fifty years in the making and is gonna be so important to this community. The Cresco groundbreaking on Thursday couldn't have been a prouder moment for me. I mean, it's really was what I, was one of my major goals, was to encourage and facilitate development. And I think that that's a perfect project for the community. And now that we'll have all those other acres to develop, I'm really excited for what's gonna happen. Nobody's gonna get rid of me, I'm still at the Chamber of Commerce, so I will be, and street fair is still happening, thanks to Alex, so you guys won't be rid of me, you'll probably see me just as much as you did. It just won't be as much fun, maybe, I don't know, maybe it'll be more fun, I don't know. Because there's definitely some things about this that weren't all fun, but I just, you know, I have more time to spend with my husband. I appreciate Ted being here, he was here the night I was sworn in back in two thousand five, and along with my son, which I, who I will see in about four days, five days, so that'll be nice. So I just, I just want to thank everybody this, see, I knew this was gonna happen. This is a great group of people. I've gotten to know Lisa and Kevin before and after the election, and I'm very excited for what they're gonna bring to council. It's exactly the reason I decided not to run this time, is that there needs to be new energy, there needs to be new, new thinking and new approaches. So I knew it was time. It'll actually give me more opportunity to do the work, my work at the chamber, so I'll hopefully actually have more time to spend working for the village. And that's what I intend to keep doing, that's what I've been doing since we've been here. This is a really surprising thing for me. And the article that Diane wrote, I really appreciate, I don't appreciate the picture quite so much, but, but the article, I know, we had difficulty, we knew, I knew it was gonna not be a great picture, but that's okay. It really, you know, it's a great article and really spoke to how I felt about this. This was really one of the most surprising things I've ever done. It's not, I never thought I would, I would be an elected official, and it's taken me places that I didn't expect, really connected me to the region, connected the community to the region. I really hope that, you know, I know that Brian, especially in his role with Rails to Trails, is also very connected to the region, and I, and I think that the rest of the folks are too, and that's just so important. We're such an important part of this region, and our voice, especially in Green County, our voice has to be heard. So, because we're the only ones speaking this story in Green County. So I encourage everybody to continue in the region, continue outreach, and continue to support citizens. Honestly, I agree with everything that Jerry said as far as the housing piece is concerned. We need a lot of housing. So, and we need to welcome lots of, lots of citizens, lots of businesses, welcome people into the community. So I want to thank the citizens who elected me, and I, three times, and I want to thank those that supported me, and I continue to ask for your support as I'm at the chamber. Thank everybody, thank my fellow council members and my staff.
When, in two thousand five, when Karen was elected, this village was very divided. I mean, the council meetings were not friendly places, and I attribute a lot of the peace and tranquility since two thousand and five to Karen and pulling people together, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Al.
Well, I expressly came to say my public farewells to Karen and to Jerry. I had a lot to say, but Jerry took all my time. I'll really keep it brief. During our orientation, I learned a lot about the things that Jerry did, you know, the storm and helping the guys out. I want a jacket like that. So I will, I will vow, I will vow to consider trying to fill some of Jerry's shoes. I mean, I've said it before, when we, during our orientation, you know, I often joke with people and say, hey, I want to be you when I grow up. I don't know that I could do all of what you have done, but, but I will, I will make the effort, I will make the effort. You've really set the bar high, Jerry is a community servant, but I, but I will take on the challenge, and I'll try to pluck a couple of leaves off of that tree. Karen probably thought whenever we were in spinning class and fitness classes that, that she was just having general conversation, but she became my mentor and really gave me a lot of settling advice about this job and how to, you know, portray myself and just how to handle certain situations. So Karen, I, I value you as a dear friend. Now I'm trying to work out my schedule so I can go to spinning class more often so I can pedal, ride along with you, but I appreciate all the wisdom and advice, advice and encouragement that you've given me. I'm sure I echo a lot of the sentiments, but I will certainly miss you guys, but I'll, I'll be tugging your ear, looking for continued words of wisdom. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Each one of the guests have a meeting. Jerry, you know, yours, safety-wise, Karen, we want you to take this hard hat, we had it personalized, we want it to hang in your office so you can continue to help the village develop and for us to grow as a village. And as you see, a lot of groundbreakings and ribbon-cutting ceremonies.
Just, just quick words, since we probably need to move on soon, but I just want to say, I came on to council two thousand five when Karen was elected, we were elected together. And I very much appreciate the work that Karen has done. She's been a great leader to our community. She's, we've had our differences, but we've always worked it through, we've had a very cordial relationship. I feel a lot of appreciation for all that Karen's done for the community, and I want to, I want to thank you.
Thanks.
So, when I ran for council in two thousand thirteen, the thing I put out there was that I wanted to work with Karen. And when I came to town, I was just amazed that there was somebody like Karen in Yellow Springs who just had so much gumption, so much, you know, go at it, do it, and it really motivated me so much. We've been such great friends since I've been here. And there are twelve roses over there for Karen's twelve years, and I thought I'd keep it short, because I don't like to get emotional. So I wrote down twelve words that make me think of Karen. Direct, we all know that. Energetic, most of my late-night texts and early morning texts are with Karen. Super knowledgeable, I have not, I can't believe how much Karen knows and how much she's taught me. Smart, not just in terms of intellect, but also in terms of a wonderful dresser. Fun, we always have a blast everywhere we go. Open-minded, I, I've always been impressed that Karen really listens at this table and, and often changes her mind based on what we talk about. Engaged, again, we all know that. Connected, I mentioned this in the article, she knows everybody in the region, everywhere we go. Karen, Karen. Super cool, all right? I hope I grow up to be as cool as Karen. Passionate about this community, dedicated to everything she does, and really with it. I mean, I have learned so much about leadership from Karen Wintrow, and I hope that I can carry the torch.
Karen, I think that over the last three and a half years, I, between the texts and the phone calls and emails and the personal meetings, I have probably spent more time with you than I have with my husband.
Oh, I can guarantee that, on my side.
But that's a good thing. From the day that you called me and told me I got this job that sent me hopping around the IHOP in Milford, some people were looking at me. You have been there for me to bounce ideas off of, thoughts, you have let me blow off steam when I needed to, and you've always tried to put me down the right path. Thank you.
I didn't get to say something about Jerry, so I want to do both at the same time. So Jerry, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity that you gave me when you were in that interview with Kent Bristol and you hired me. This has definitely been one of the best decisions of my life, coming here and working for the village and working with all of you. And I don't know what it is that you've seen in me, but I'm glad that you've seen it, and I'm still here, and I'm a lifer, as I've said. So I love this place, and I'm thankful for everything that you've done and for believing in me, because it means the world to me. And Karen, I want to be you when I grow up. I do. Your energy and your passion are just so inspiring to me, and I look up to you more than what I'll ever be able to put into words than you'll ever know. I think you're an amazing person, inside and out, and I, I truly mean that you're, you're a true mentor to me.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, last thing I'm gonna say, all those in favor, this will be, and this will be the last time I say that, this, at this table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we should have a little break.
Oh, yeah, we got cupcakes.
We're gonna do, don't we, because we've got some big discussion items.
No break.
Tiny break, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, five minutes.
Cupcake break, is that what we're doing?
I have a different costume.
Pat, I've got here. Oh, you can always get the hook up. I was gonna toss one, you stopped calling, I was like, oh, maybe she's good.
Brian, you have to get out there so we can see the whole class.
Oh. I still got my, my tennis shoes on.
Oh, yes.
I can text you, it looks like you're very sweet, but yeah.
Did you see the pants, the matching pants?
I'm glad you sent me that link, because it was like, I mean, I opened my, and I got one for my brother, too.
Is he the guy that I know there, too, with the Cardinals?
Oh, that's great. I couldn't even see him.
Are these points set?
Yeah, well, they sent her like a Hawaiian Christmas flower.
Beautiful.
I take care of that.
Did he see what the tie to it is?
I know.
I think the owner, she's a little bit of a...
My daughter was a senior, and she absolutely...
Everyone's welcome to come up and grab a cake.
Come on out and all, grab a cake.
I probably shouldn't have taken two.
I'm so happy that I got the two to deal.
I know, isn't that crazy? Isn't that crazy?
Sort of, kind of. I don't know why that was made such a, you know, happy. I don't know why that was, we didn't just vote on it, why this, we haven't thought about it.
I know.
It's pretty awesome.
I think we need to go look at our practices. I think you should go look at your...
I love that, that was so great.
I wasn't applying, you know.
I got my Christmas card, she says pictures are so cute.
I know.
So what'd you get her for Christmas?
I got her a walker and like some other toys and stuff, I did get her a whole bunch of stuff.
So she got, did she see Santa?
Yeah, we took her to...
Oh, that's right.
She and Xenia, she's just staring, stared up at him, kicked her shoes off.
Because she's too young, I mean, next year, maybe, she'll freak out.
Next year, she might freak out, yeah.
I'm sure at this point, she's like...
Yeah. What's everything, your face?
Well, everything she looks at is probably like a surprise.
Yeah.
Oh, where was I yesterday? I was somebody, I was someplace, and I said, I said hi to some little boy, and this little boy is like two years old, he barely talks, and he said to his mom, stranger, stranger. he said to his mom, stranger danger. It was the most bizarre.
Stranger danger about you?
About me.
Were you given any fondly look?
No, I don't think so. I forget what I said to him. It was the weirdest thing. I've never had a kid do that.
Yeah, that's weird. I mean, it's funny, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to get to say that to somebody. Yeah, yeah.
I probably shouldn't have taken two.
Oh, there's, there's a time.
Good balance.
I am.
Which, that was the picture, wasn't it?
No, that's a different one.
No.
You should tell Taylor to take your photos.
Oh, yeah. I'll just wait and hear tomorrow.
That's why, when the thing says, oh, is that what they are?
No.
What time is it?
That's cool.
I know. I love it. I wouldn't mind there being, but I guess if they, if they probably can't put a village logo on it, because then maybe I'll put a change of logo on it. So, like, guys, let's give it maybe a couple of minutes and reconvene. Mary Ann? Two minutes. Well.
VIL dot yellow springs dot O H dot U S will get you there. You have to have the VIL.
I know, that is so amazing. What is that? Is it just, I guess it's just black, black. It's just like shiny, black, black. And that's like black, just white metal. Yeah, you can see it's fingerprints. Be careful. What is it? I can't see that small print.
Come on, let me shine it up. It reflects everything.
Yeah, yeah. Or, did you get a cupcake?
Karen, do you want to introduce Spencer? Yeah. We haven't done that yet.
Yeah, I think ICMA was the only thing that was kind of reflected, but.
What's on that?
Ready to get started? So, everybody, oh, Judy's not here. Judy's just in the hall. Oh.
I can have this here. I'll take notes. She might be a minute.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Go ahead.
So, we'll reconvene. Before we get to citizens' concerns, I do want to do another thank you and a, an introduction. Susan Gartner is moving on. I don't know if this will be her last meeting, but we have hired a new station, what do we call it? Station manager?
Yes.
Station manager for Channel Five, Spencer. And what's his name?
Glazer.
Spencer Glazer, sorry. He's been here filming the last two meetings. Antioch student? Are you a current student?
Just graduated.
Just gra, congratulations. Congratulations. And thank you to Susan. She has, she stepped in when we really needed help here and has really helped get things on the straight and narrow with Channel Five, and has worked really hard to keep, keep some interesting content on Channel Five, besides their scintillating council and planning commission meetings. So, she's gone back and found archives and things of fun things happening in Yellow Springs. So, she has contributed greatly to, to, to moving Channel Five forward, and I know Spencer will even more. I think that actually the idea of him and Kevin potentially working together, since Kevin's IT and an Antioch person, that there may be some even more fun things coming. So, welcome and thank you so much, Susan.
Thanks, Susan.
And I'd like to thank Susan. I think that you have been a very gracious presence in this room. You know, you have a certain amount of informality and friendliness, and it's just had a nice impact in this space.
Susan does have one more meeting.
One more? So, we'll say more nice things about you at the next meeting. Now, we will open it up for citizens' concerns about items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you come up to the podium and state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone have anything to say? Okay. We will move on to old business. The first item of old business is the Justice System Task Force, the Citation and Warnings Report. Judith, are you going to introduce this?
I would like to say a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
And then Pat's really going to.
Okay.
Pat and John, I think, are giving presentations, and maybe Beth. I'm not sure. Beth Crandall's been helping. I just wanted to say, when we decided to take this on, it was in part because with criminal justice reform, you know, doing data collection to monitor, to know what's going on and to monitor what's going on, is a standard and important practice. And so, I think John and Pat in the, initially, you know, really took this on. John probably put in, I don't know, 50 hours at least, probably more, in terms of, and, and took the initiative to contact right states, Mike Bottomley. We offered, one of the mistakes I think we made was that we, we asked him to do the work, Mike, and we, he said it would take two hours. And to say, in fairness to Mike Bottomley, he's probably put in 20, 30, 40 hours, maybe. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. He put in a lot more time than two hours. So, part of the problem with that is that we then did not ask him to come and present to the, to the committee, and so there were some confusions, you know, and just from our lack of experience, et cetera, that came out of that. He did send, I did ask him to go to the, come to the last committee meeting, and he was not able to attend, and he then sent a clarification report, which I think has, has been very helpful. Part of what he explained is that this was an exploratory study, and one of the things that I don't think we could have really done in a study is to, the discrepancies that are, are found in the study, what the causes are. That's not something that they tested for or probably could test for. So, you know, people may come up with their own conclusions about causes, but that's not something that a study like this could test for. I think that's, with that, and the committee spent a lot of time on this. I want to reference Ellis Jacobs' letter of appreciation and just to the council for letting us go forward with this study, and appreciation for the committee's work on it. With no further ado, Pat is going to do an overview.
Thanks, Judith. Pat Dewey's Justice System Task Course, and I'm here with my colleagues on the project, the Police Data Analysis Project. John Hemplin, who, after I say a few things, is going to explain our research design and findings from that report, and Beth Crandall, who is our citizen consultant. Beth is, has a great deal of experience and skill in statistics, and weirdly enough, she actually likes it. So, she's been very, very helpful, and she's here to answer, help answer any questions that come up after we give the report. And I just want to make a couple of main points that Judith started to make. As a committee, we had consensus that this is important work to do. I mean, this is very critical to organize and look at policing data. It creates, it is central to creating the culture of transparency, to know what's going on. It tells all of us what types of crimes might be occurring in the community. Not that, our report did not do this, but it could do this. It looks at policing activities, which is what we did, and how the police is interacting with the community, who are they citing and what for. And again, as Judith said, we didn't have the resources to go into all of the questions, but we got started with what's happening, or what can we see if we take a big look backwards. And we want to know that that activity is lined up with policing values, and that's where it becomes really central to this whole thing of having community values line up with the values of the police department and their activities. And it also brings up questions about how things might be improved in the community as well as in the police department. So, that was the first point, that it's really important work. It's central to the, to the goals of this project, to analyze data. And we did, we really did a good job, and we did an amazing job considering what a big job it is. And it was important work, and we did it as well as we could, and I think that we did it pretty well. The second point is, we did it to learn, because we knew that it was important, and we wanted to find out, well, what, you know, what kind of information is collected in these records that the police department must, they must put in a lot of their data by law. They have to be recording their citations. They have to be recording even their warnings. What's in there? So, that was the first question, to find out, like, what's there? And then also to learn, what, what's involved in doing an analysis, a fair analysis? What's involved in the benchmarks? And now, we're at the place of trying to learn, like, what's the best kind of reporting with the community and even with the council, and certainly with the, with the police department? I guess the other thing is that we'll, that we would go to next is, after we have a finding, and this brings up some findings of concern, because it's exploratory, as Judith said, it doesn't say why something is happening. And I'll use one of our less surprising findings as an example. We found in doing this analysis over a period of, gosh. How many years?
Six.
Six years?
Six and three quarters.
Six and three quarters years. Over that period of time, young people in our village, between the ages of 15 and 20-something, they have more warnings from the police than people over the age of 60, like me, who are too tired to get into trouble. Who, who is surprised by this? No one. No one is surprised by this finding. But what we don't know is, why, what, why were they given warnings? What were they doing? Is it just speeding, or was there something else going on? Anything connected with drugs that would be more concerning? We don't really know why, and this study doesn't tell us why. So, that would lead to the next step. And the next step might be, what could be done, either in terms of how the police interact with young people, or how young people are trained in certain, well, for example, driver's education. So, the exploratory nature of it means that we come to these findings, we see that they're serious, and we should think about them and talk about them, and maybe do a next level of analysis. Because the exploratory findings, you can't come to a conclusion. You can't really come to any conclusion with them. It's just showing that relationship. So, I, I would say that those are the important things. It's important to do this work. We did it to learn. We did a lot of learning, and it's exploratory. We'll have next steps. So, now John is going to explain the report itself and the main findings.
Thanks, Pat.
Hi. So, just for, would like to make one clarification, that on the one hand, basically, a research into the disparities is something where you just won't be able to figure out causality. You can just say, okay, well, for example, to quote from this, to quote a document that I quoted when I made the request for funds, from Sonia Starr, a law professor at the University of Chicago, "Raw disparity statistics entail simple comparisons across racial groups, the per capita rates of police interactions, or similarly, comparisons of a group's population share to its share of police interactions. Such statistics have played an important role in debates about race and policing." For example, one study recently found, quote, "Blacks were subject to 63% of pedestrian stops, even though they made up just 24% of Boston's population." And so, that, that's just sort of the nature of disparity statistics. And the only way to look into causality would be to design experiments, which would obviously be expensive, probably unfeasible in a small community, and possibly unethical and dangerous, to basically have people pretend to commit violations on the street and then test, you know, in a controlled fashion. Anyway, but that's separate from the question of whether or not the study is exploratory. It's exploratory because basically this is sort of the first go at looking at the statistics. And in theory, we could look deeper at some of the questions that are raised by the study, but it would still be just more disparity statistic, statistical analysis. And then just a note on the, I think, I think I'll come to that later. First, I just, I think I'll go through first in terms of explaining the research questions, making sure that you guys feel comfortable in terms of your understanding of what the dataset was that we were doing the analysis on, and then we can talk about the findings. So, feel free to stop me at any point. We can, of course, go back to these if, when we're discussing the findings and you go back. So, two research questions were asked. We were looking at, basically comparing the proportion of people in the, in the dataset that were cited or received warnings compared to the people in Yellow Springs as estimated by the American Community Survey, from their 2011 to 2015 five-year estimates. So, if you'll look at my little JSTF Extended Data Analysis Summary here, page two, basically, it shows that there was, there was, you know, for example, approximately 49, 497 black people, according to the American Community Survey, in Yellow Springs. And of those, 65 or 13% received at least one citation, as opposed to there being about 3,027 white people in Yellow Springs, and of those, 285 received at least one citation, which is, you know, about nine point, about nine and a half percent. And so, basically, using the Chi-square test, Bottomley concluded that the likelihood that that difference is due purely to chance is about 1.24. In this study, because it was exploratory, any p-value below 5% was considered statistically significant, which just means that basically, he found that there was a statistical relationship between race and getting at least one citation. Do you guys have any, have any questions at this point? Okay. And then.
And I'll just say, as a council member, that I don't need digging in deep, just sort of the general.
Okay.
You know, like, a few more minutes.
Oh, a few more minutes? Okay. Well, then, we, we also were looking at, on average, among Yellow Springs residents that received at least one citation, what was the average number of citations that they received for each demographic group? So, that's, instead of looking at the whole population and comparing it to the, to the American Community Survey, you're looking just at the people who received at least one citation, and asking, on average, because people often receive more than one, on average, whether certain groups that were cited were receiving more citations on average than other groups. Does that make sense? It's like, that's a separate question, because you're looking at separate populations. Okay. So, y'all are good on that. You're the fastest students at this. Fantastic. And the dataset that we were using was from the police. The race and, I'm sorry, the age and sex data was basically from the person's license usually, and was pretty much always available, as opposed to the race data, which was basically on the officer's determination and was pretty often unavailable. And I could get into more details about that and how I used information, where if you had the person. had the person in the dataset multiple times, and sometimes the race was missing, and sometimes it was there, we were able to sort of fill in some of the blanks there. But we don't need to get into details, I guess. Basically, the study found that for citations, black residents, younger residents, and men were more likely to have received at least one citation than women, older residents, and white residents, as per their proportion of the population. In terms of the average numbers of citations received, the study found no, basically, the difference was not statistically significant for race, and then it was for age and for For the warning data, because we've ran the same tests but for warning, there was no relationship for race or sex in terms of comparing their proportion in the census data, in terms of like, whether they were more or less likely to receive at least one And like, lots and lots of people received at least one warning. Really high percentages for everyone. But when you're looking at the average number of warnings received, there was an interaction between race, age, and sex, in which, sorry, I should actually reference the report on this, which I hope I brought up here with me. Yeah, but I want the precise age groups here.
It's 25 to 34 and 45 to 59.
Yes. The 25 to 34-year-old black men and 45 to 59-year-old black men received significantly more warnings on average than everyone else. Actually, by a pretty significant amount. As I recall, the, I think it was the 45 to 59-year-old black men were actually receiving on average, and of course, you know, you're cutting the data pretty tightly there, so it's a pretty small number of people, but they received on average, I believe, more than three warnings each. And so I guess that's a pretty good review of the findings there. If you want any other numbers to like, help you understand the strength of the differences? Or do you have any questions, general? Or do we want to open up to the community for a Q and A?
Well, you have some other people?
Are you gonna, yeah?
Yeah, we'll see.
Or do you want to add anything?
Let's start, let's see.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Well, all I'm going to say is, do I need to stand up?
Yeah, you do, sorry.
I'm Beth Crandall. I think, really, what I'm here to do is answer your questions, and to give an overview, if that's helpful. So if I were to summarize this, this is, in social science research, really a pretty simple design. There are four measures. Of those four measures, two of them show some kind of effect of race that's focused on members of our black community. Many of the, three to four of the measures show an effect of age. So that's just kind of a big picture. Now, as Pat said, you can't say, this sort of analysis does not allow you to say why any of this has happened. It tells you that there's a relationship. And it's really up to you as council and us as community members to take hold of these findings and talk about what they mean and what we might want to do about them. And I believe, this is a personal opinion, that that discussion, to be really productive, needs to involve community members, council members, and the police. All, you know, those three entities need to come together in some conversation and discourse. And I think that would include, what are our next questions? What else do we want to know? So that's sort of my big question.
So I do have a question, Beth.
Yes.
So, do you think that the data and the analysis that's been done so far is enough to move to the step you're suggesting? In other words, bringing community, village government, and the police together? Or do you think that some, either some additional data needs to be obtained, or that it needs to be refined more?
I think, given the nature of our community, and this is a public meeting, and probably some of this information is going to end up in the Yellow Springs news, that conversation is going to happen anyway. So it's going to happen, we need to be ready to engage it. And I think it's really important that it involve members of our police department so that they're not sort of off to the side, being talked about, instead of being part of the discourse and the discussion. So that's one thing. I have been to, I've been working on this with John since last summer. So I wasn't involved at the very beginning. I've been to a couple of the task force meetings. This analysis and the report that came to us from Right State generated a lot of questions, some amount of confusion, which I think is kind of natural, if you're not used to stats. And a lot of questions that could be next questions. One of the things Pat and John and I have talked about is whether a next step could be kind of gathering all those questions together, going back to the task force with the, put them out on the table, and ask the task force to sort through them and decide what the next good question is, or what the priorities might be for additional, additional data collection, additional analysis. So that's what I thought.
I'd like to ask a question of, given the fact that this, that this, that this information is, it's not that old. I mean, 2010 to 2016 isn't that long ago. But there has been a significant change in the police department, in the personnel in the police department. Given the resources of the village, and given the fact that we really are, there is obviously serious intent from this council, and I believe from the new council members also, from the police department and from the rest of the staff, to move forward on reforms and on improving police and citizen relations. Do you, do you think that this data piece, that this research piece really is important? I mean, I feel like we're parsing this data, and I'm like, you know, why are we spending the human and the financial resources? I realize it was only $200, it's not a lot of money. But is it going to really get us anything that is worth exploring at this point? Should we set 2017 as a new data point, as a new timeframe, and move forward, come up with the data, the answers, the questions we want answered, and then move forward rather than try to deal with this old data?
I think that's a great question. It's one that we've talked about. John did an analysis that he can describe, because I'm not sure what he did. But it involved looking over time, over those years, to see whether some of these relationships held, even depending on who was on the police force, so?
Yes. So if you look at, basically, these questions were raised by task force members, including, including Al Schluter, but not only Al Schluter. But I included it in my response to Al Schluter's report on racial bias in Yellow Springs police citations. So if you look at page two and three of that report, it provides some supplemental descriptive So page three does, just breaks it down by year. I'm sure if we talked to a statistician, we could do probably something more sophisticated over time, because obviously, the sample sizes get a little bit smaller over the years. But pretty much, I think that overall, you can say that in 2010 and 2011, the, basically, are the only years in which the racial disparity is actually smaller than the racial disparity averaged altogether. Basically, those two years are bringing the racial disparity down. So actually, if you looked at more recent data, and excluded older data, at least, you know, up to 2016, up through 2016, the disparity would be larger. Similarly, if you look at page two.
So the bottom line for them?
What's the bottom line?
The bottom line, the bottom line, the answer to Karen's question.
The bottom line answer to Karen's question, I mean, my view is that, you know, institutions don't change, like, the police department aren't, police departments aren't known to like, shift radically over a short period of time. So I expect that luckily, data analysis over a period of time in which luckily, the sample size will also be large enough to actually do meaningful analysis, would still be meaningful. Also, the task force itself has these same concerns about recency and turnover. And so I feel like, to respond to those concerns fully, it would make sense to do some statistical analysis along at least those dimensions, if not, you know, more.
The other answer, I'd say, to the, why bother looking at the history? Because now is now, let's go forward. I share that. I think looking at policing data over time, going forward, could be really important. But I also think that this analysis offers some empirical support for the anecdotal evidence from members of our black community, that they feel singled out, particularly younger folks, and maybe males, feel singled out by the police. And you can look at that and dismiss it and say, okay, well, that was then, we're going to go forward. But there's some empirical evidence here that supports those reports. And I think we need to pay attention to that.
Yes.
Think about it, and do something with it.
Yes, and I would agree. And I think it's also important to get those particular stories from people that have had these interactions, to get sort of a deeper understanding of what's happening in the police interaction, rather than just these top-line numbers. But I feel like the usefulness of statistical analysis is you're able to say, well, this isn't just anecdotal information, we're actually seeing a statistically significant disparity here.
Yeah. I'd say a few things, please.
Absolutely.
And Al has been sitting there with his hand raised.
Oh, sorry, Al. That's the problem with sitting in the back.
Okay. Well, I just want to point out the obvious, that this is pretty complicated. And I also want to share that we're not alone. Last week, I met with the Dayton Community Police Council. I was there with Bill Randolph, Pastor Randolph, and they shared their biggest challenge is working with data. And the biggest challenge of the challenge is how to communicate with the public and with council. And you saw that, you've got your big pile of things that we gave you, and I'm sure you all stayed up reading. So, and places that have been at this. Some of the places that have been at this for a long time actually put information online. In other words, it's web reporting. So, because this is all connected, as I said, I started to say, to transparency, so that citizens see, and I know you get a monthly report, right? I mean, you always get a monthly report, and we have our reports in the newspaper. But that's a point in time. And this really does show us what's happened over three police chiefs. This is, I think, three, three police chiefs. This is consistent. There's an issue here, there's a concern, over three police chiefs. And we need to look at it, and we need to think about it. Again, we don't know the whole story, and we have to keep saying that. This is very exploratory. We don't know what people were stopped for. I mean, we don't know which officers, whether some officers who are more likely to stop people. There's so much we don't know. It's not the whole story. But it is a concern, and it's something that we have to pay attention to and keep going with.
Al?
I just wanted to, Al Schluter, I'm on the Justice Systems Task Force, I wanted to respond to what Karen said. My concern was that we get some data, and I just talked to Chief, I had emailed him, asking him if I could get the data from 2017 so I could compare the statistics for that year with the past years. And we were, he apparently didn't get it for some reason, so I'm gonna, I told him I was gonna see him so I can get those data. I think that's very important. I was very, very, not very happy with the report that you've gotten, and some of the circumstances that led to that. And so I did some analysis myself, trying to get a better understanding of what was going on. And I looked at each individual police officer, and the percent of tickets ranged from 35% African-Americans to zero, depending on which officer. So there's a great disparity, and some of that needs to be looked at, so we understand what's happening. Just quoting these figures, 1.39 racial disparity doesn't say anything unless we do a little more in-depth study, and that's what I tried to do in mine. And I would like to continue, just in the direction you suggested.
Ryan, it seemed like, let's hear from Dave.
Yeah. Still David Turner. Thanks to John and Beth, you guys worked really hard, you know, put together a lot of information. In doing statistical process control analysis of a manufacturing process, you're measuring all kinds of things, or very few things. And all it tells you is what's going on. You know, it tells you what the biggest and smallest cornflakes are you getting out of the cornflake machine. You can be getting burned giant cornflakes, and if you don't change the process, you keep getting burned giant cornflakes. So just doing the analysis is useful, but, or doing analysis is useful, but you have to do more than that. This can be, I think, used as a jumping off point to consider the processes that exist, and how to change them to get different outcomes, which is, which is what we want. This is a piece of information to guide us to do that, and it might be useful to do more data collection, but as many people have said, the past, you know, is a push. But what we need to do is make changes in the kind of information we're going to collect, if we're going to collect it, to get a better picture of it, to get, you know, better data. And also, it can be used with things like implicit bias trading and all the other things, you know, that we're considering, and put that together as a package.
Thanks, Dave. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, I mean, sort of echoing what Karen said, I mean, to me, this trend analysis, I think, is what's, you know, interesting. It seems to me that doing the Chi-square test and that kind of thing is something that we can do. And I remember way back when, Melissa even mentioned that, I mean, she's got enough basic statistics to kind of continue to run these numbers. I also think the qualitative piece is interesting to me, and I think you've raised some of those aspects. But I like what Dave said, because to me, it is, you know, that now that we've identified and kind of created a benchmark, I like the idea of continuing to look at the, at the results and seeing what's happened, and having that be part of the change that we're working on. So I appreciate that we started with this, and I know, John, you've mentioned way back when, the idea that we need to have, we need to report what's going on in, you know, in a data kind of way. But, you know, I know enough about basic statistics to know that we don't have to get too complicated. I mean, Beth, you said yourself, I mean, this is pretty basic, the factors that we're looking at. So I'd like to see that continue. But I do think what's most relevant is when Chief Carlson started, and then, you know, I'd like to see what's going on in the department now and moving forward, or, you know, a year ago and moving forward. So I thank the committee for the work, and I think this is a good starting point.
I mean, I'd like to say that I think Beth's idea of, you know, citizens, council members, and the police department be meeting to discuss these. I don't, I mean, we want to, we don't want to, well, we look to the past, and what we've discovered is important. It is particularly important to some parts.
It is particularly important to some parts of our community. And we should not in any way discount the importance of it because of how important it is to particularly younger black men in the community, but black citizens. And so I think moving forward by having that kind of conversation could be, would be very good. And so I would ask, you know, maybe, you know, I know you said going back to the committee and saying, what questions should we ask, or how should we go forward? But you guys have been working at it, and you've been thinking about it. And I would ask you, and I think Chief might have input here as well, what is the next step? How do we go forward? Then one of the questions, too, is how do we continue to gather data into the future? But this idea of now having this conversation, including our police department, I do think it's very important. I'm really glad our chief is so committed and not afraid to address these issues, and, you know, has every, has a real commitment there. But I would ask you three to come back to the committee with recommendations rather than asking the committee, you know, I think it'll be better if you come with some ideas and then we can add in. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think that this is a great starting point, and I don't have, I'm not surprised, I don't have a problem saying or believing that there was some racial bias. And I think if we just use that as the jumping-off point for moving forward. I mean, when I see a report that has, you know, we spent $200 for it, but it has piles and piles of initial reports, clarifications, letters, you know, I mean, responses, I really meant this, it really means this. I mean, I, sorry, John, but I almost feel like this, other than basic, you know, maybe having this basic answer that yes, there was bias, I don't know that there is data here. I wouldn't want to see resources, financial resources, spent to further investigate this particular data point, this particular information. I think we need to use that data. If we can use it comparatively moving forward, use it. But I think we just need to look at moving forward, getting the data that's going to be important, and doing it collaboratively. But I, you know, I, you know, and especially when you've got the guy who did the research basically saying, I didn't know that this was what I was doing, and, you know, I really didn't understand the job I was doing.
Well, I don't think that's quite fair. So just to clarify on the point of the many clarifications and unfortunate corrections, I feel like that was just part of the learning process for the data analysis project. This is our first analysis, and basically, mostly, the consultant made a number of errors that were later detected as I checked the descriptive statistics. But in the future, I'll.
[laughter]
No, no, my bottom line. And basically, in the future, I will just make sure to check all of the descriptive statistics before sharing the analysis with anyone. And I think that that would solve a majority of the problem. The other, the error that I made, obviously, I learned, was due to a miscommunication between me and the department. But, you know, it was very, very minor. And once again, I think that he was just concerned that people would think that this was sort of a, not an exploratory study, and he was just trying to underline that, or that somehow causality could be inferred from this study. But I think that, in fact, our summaries were very clear, that we recognized that it was an exploratory study, and also that causality could not be inferred from the statistics.
I want to say a particular thanks. These guys put in a heck of a lot of work on a really complicated issue. We paid 200 and some dollars for all of this, you understand. That's because all these guys did a ton of volunteer work. And another thing, though, I do want to say in terms of where statistics could help us, I've mentioned it to Al before, is, you know, our efforts to use our mayor's court more effectively. I mean, one thing we could start to use our stats for is looking at where our, you know, citations are being sent, and that would be a way to start to have more, you know, to kind of see what's going on with that, and maybe have some ideas of making sure our mayor's court's used more effectively. So, thank you.
Okay, I got something to say. You know, what some of us have found out about these statistics and data and so forth, the black community has known about this for years. We really don't need the discussion on the validity of the data, what groups were included, what groups were not included. We know the issues. As a community, as we continue to talk about the issues, a lot of those of us that were probably affected and involved have either passed away, or they moved away from the community. So the statistics may help those that are here, but we got, this is the statistics, we've got the data. To me, what we need to do is start sitting down and talking about, as a group of individuals within the community, not white versus black versus mixed versus other. We know that, okay? We know that as time moves forward, people move forward. But we need to start, and it's not only with how many times I get a warning, or how many times that I look in my rearview mirror and a white car with a little light on the top maybe following me, or as I'm walking home from a basketball game late at night with my hoodie up, a light's not shining across my back, where are you going, and so forth. We need to start having these discussions as to, we can't fix the problem across the nation, but if we see issues with our own little community, how do we start working on those? With the common goal of everybody is accepted for their strengths, weaknesses, and faults. And we decided to move here because we did have some things in common, and we want to see things get better. But you guys can look at the data, the facts, and so forth. Within the black community, we've been trying to, we've been talking, we've been working with our youth to not try to change them, but just to identify what may be out there as they go through their day-to-day. And it's more of not putting fear in the minds of our youth, but putting awareness in the minds of our youth, and then trying to train them as to, within the society that we live in, there are certain things that are acceptable and certain things that are unacceptable. And that's what we strive for. And I think what the community should be striving for is, we can't solve all the problems, but how can we make things just a little bit better and take some of that doubt and apprehension out of the African-American community? So we can feel more like citizens of the community and not always having to look over our shoulder.
So are we, good discussion?
Yeah, very good.
Are we ready to kind of wrap this one up? I mean, is there a next step? I guess that'll just be something that you guys all talk about, maybe at your retreat or at the next council meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is revolving loan fund follow-up. Brian, I'll let you start this one.
Actually, I think this is Chris. Is that right?
Well, yes. I mean, it's going to be very short.
Good.
In order to do this, we need to establish the CIC, and then we can look at how we can administer that and explore the possibility.
Establish what?
Ordering with the credit union.
The CIC.
Community Investment Corporation. And it.
That's what community resources was.
Well, no, because they were non-designated.
Good job.
And that's also been disbanded, I believe.
It has. Can we use Green County CIC? Can we use another governmental organization?
The reason why I would encourage you to do one for the village alone is that because you can use it as a tool for other things. You are a creative group, a creative community, and want to be available for a number of different, as a resource. And so I think that by having an existing structure in place, it allows some flexibility. But for the purposes of the revolving loan fund, the methodology that municipalities use through the CIC.
And part of the reason I like the idea of it being a village entity, that's what it would be, right?
Well, there's ways are different.
It's a separate corporation, but it would be, for example, I would imagine that for purposes of the revolving loan fund, staff would be on the board, probably.
Well, yeah, what my, yeah, I just wanted, the reason I like that structure is because there's more transparency with it, that it's, you know, a quasi-public entity.
Well, I will say, I was on the founding board of community resources, and there was a lot of discussion at the time about not having a designated CIC, and there was, there were a lot of concerns about it. So I'd want for us to spend some time thinking about this. And I'm not clear why, for the, unless we significantly increase the funds, maybe we will, that we establish a whole nother quasi-governmental organization to distribute $35,000 in revolving loan funds. So it's late, this isn't something to talk about, but this is something.
It's a more complicated discussion.
And there's also another issue related to transparency. I think, you know, Judith's concern with transparency is more about, you know, what potentially, what kind of business entities are, you know, we're attracting into the village and that kind of thing. But the other piece of the transparency is that we're also dealing with people's private financial information. And so there's a point at which there could be some concern about.
Well, I understand.
About transparency.
Oh, I see. So you're saying that.
Because this is about the loans. These are about small loans.
Aren't those under executive session or something?
No. No, that's, so.
Well, part of the reason we, you know, were interested in, you know, the donated services of the credit union was that they could handle that financial piece and have that separation. I think what Chris is saying is, to facilitate the credit union being involved, this designated CIC is something that we should look at. But I also agree, and there was some research that we saw way back when about designated CICs that we can bring back and look at. I mean, it gives us, if we want, I mean, we can have as much oversight. I mean, typically, a designated CIC involves some of the elected officials being, you know, a part of that board, so.
I have a question, Chris. I mean, if the way this conversation in the Economic Sustainability Commission has been going around this small amount of money, this small pot of money, about $35,000, has been that they will be very small loans, grants, well, no loans, that they will be very small loans that they could actually potentially be of a higher risk nature, really for people who are, you know, kind of have a new enterprise, things that normally most revolving loan funds simply do not fund. Retail, they don't fund retail. Restaurant, they don't fund restaurant. There are so many things that people in this community want to do from an economic development standpoint that don't fall under most revolving loan funds. Could that money be set aside simply as grant funding, without going through a CIC? Simply as grant funding, so that these, or loans, unsecured loans, or something? I mean, because of the fact that they're loans, I assume, and there is some payback requirement, I assume that that's different than doing a grant.
My answer is, off the top of my head, I would be uncomfortable with a grant project where the village is giving away its money to private citizens without an expectation of return.
Okay.
I want to just interject. I think this kind of discussion that's happening right now should be, we should have some people appointed, whether it should be at the commission level or whatever. I mean, I'd like to have, it's 10 after 10.
Yes.
And I would have liked to have seen this already have been discussed, and the pros and cons of having a CIC, and it sounds like there hasn't been quite enough communication between the commission and Chris, frankly.
I would say that's true.
I was going to say, I think this is an important discussion, but it seems too late to really get into it, so. I'll put it on a new agenda.
Okay.
Item in January, maybe.
Okay, we'll do a brief follow-up on the designated smoking areas and signage. Council, I guess that you didn't see the signage, I think that it wasn't in the packet, it was in the electronic packet.
Judy's going to pull that up for us right now.
And Patty has a list of the areas where we're talking, the public areas, and how they'll be treated?
Yes, and we'll have five designated smoking, five properties where there will be a designated smoking area, and that will be the four parks, Gaunt, Ellis, Beatty Hughes, and Bill Duncan. And then there will be one here at the John Bryan Community Center. The rest of our properties, and I will note that the train station is not on there, but the train station will not have a designated smoking area, because by the time you get far enough away from the trail and that, you end up on the public sidewalk anyway. So it will not have a designated smoking area. So it will be the five that I mentioned, the four parks and the John Bryan Community Center. You can see the locations or the approximate locations of those on the maps. Melissa was kind enough to help me with that. And the red circles indicate where the, approximately where the designated smoking areas will be in each of these properties. And then Judy is pulling up here in a minute the sample of the door hanger, as well as the, or the information card, as well as the signage for the smoke-free areas. There's the information card. It will be double-sided with the logo or the graphic on the one side, the information on the other side. And then the signs will look similar to those, but we'll note on them, and you'll see it here, the ordinance that they're expected to comply with, and the website where they can get some help if they want to stop smoking. So this, and then I also included a sample picture of the ash bins that we're trying to get, that will go in each of the smoking areas. So they have a little plate up there at the top where you can put your cigarette out, drop the bud in, and then the top lifts off, and you can empty the receptacle at the bottom.
Screen.
So if council is okay with this, then we'll proceed with ordering the signs. Johnny will get the signs that note the designated smoking areas. The Green County Combined Health District will provide these signs, the smoke-free signs under a grant, and we will get those up as soon as they get in, because this legislation does go into effect the first of the year.
How big will the smoke-free signs be?
They're just your basic, like, no parking or stop signs.
Yeah, or speed limits.
Yeah, they're not.
Like at the entrance to each property?
They will be, they will be kind of scattered around. We've got multiple ones for each of the, we're going to ask for multiple ones for each of the property.
And I do want to point out that we are calling this tobacco-free, not just smoke-free. So that's going to include smokeless tobacco.
It does.
E-cigarettes.
That's correct.
And although, I guess, I mean, are e-cigarettes, because that's not really tobacco. And although I guess, I mean, are e-cigarettes, because that's not really tobacco, is it?
It's tobacco-free. So if it's not considered tobacco, then it would not fall under that. But two-
Right.
Does, does fall under that. Anything that is tobacco-based.
How was the spot chosen for the Bryan Center?
Well, Johnny and I drove around and looked at each of these and we discussed where would be logical to get them far enough away from the entrances because we have so many multiple entrances to the Bryan Center. Because there's the entrance right, there's not only the entrance at the main area, but there are two entrances into the gym on the side there. And so we just decided that we would move it over there by the picnic tables to get the people kind of out of the, away from the building as well as under the trees, which is a little bit of shelter.
Yeah, but it's right there in front of the basketball courts and the skate park. Why can't we have it back here?
I guess we could, but then you're putting it over there by the play area and the-
No, I'm talking about-
I think you're talking about back behind, in this area back behind the garage.
The kids play back there all the time. You know that, right? I mean, they literally play outside my window all the time, so they run back and forth back.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about right here.
They run back and forth. I mean, I can, we can talk about moving it. I mean, it's just, there's really no really good place for it on the Bryan Center.
Well, I guess I'd suggest we rethink the Bryan Center spot. I just think that's very visible. It's also visible from the trail.
Maybe we shouldn't have it at the Bryan.
That's what I think.
Well, the problem with not having it, having one here is, number one, we do have employees who smoke. Number two, we do rent this building out quite a bit and people come in and rent it and some of them would like to have a designated smoking area.
How about if we put them in the middle, in the tree forest, nobody will see them and they'll be sheltered, the pine trees out front.
I like the signs and I think it would be great to me.
The kids climb the trees.
I know, I know. There's no, there's no place-
I say, I really like the signs and I think they're great. I'm glad if we're doing this and-
There's no place we're going to escape children here, I'm afraid.
Yeah.
Because they do run everywhere. Don't they, Judy?
No. I mean, we did discuss putting it, like, kind of over here on this end and back a little bit out of the way, but then you get next to the windows of the offices that staff opens in the summertime and the smoke would, you know, flow in there, so.
I also wonder about the water spigot at Bill Duncan, just because the gardeners are using that on a pretty regular basis, I assume, aren't they?
You know, it really doesn't get used a huge amount. And there's rarely anybody down by the picnic tables at Bill Duncan.
I'm not necessarily complaining. I mean, I'm not, actually, I'm not complaining about Yellow Springs Station, but I can tell you, it is going to cause a lot of consternation.
To not have-
But we'll figure it out, to not have, because it's always been, well, so have all these other places, so I'm not going to worry about it. Okay, looks good. No new business managers' report?
Let me scroll down to that. Just that the crew quarters is, they're in the permitting stage with Green County and as soon as we get approval, we'll break around on that. We have a new special events policy in place here for all village events. And the most important thing that folks need to remember about that is if you want to have an event, it is very, very, very important that you start the process well ahead of time because there is a deadline for the event application that's 30 days prior to the event. And you need to start with Samantha Stewart down in the youth center. And then she will, she will make sure that the event gets forwarded to the appropriate person. We're still working on the small cell tower legislation. There, as Chris indicated, may be some changes coming as far as that. And from the village staff, we would like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season.
Will you put the new event policy in the packet?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And I also wanted to point out that Denise Swinger had an excellent report on planning. She does a very detailed report and she's obviously a very busy person and some good stuff has been happening on Planning Commission. Chief, oh, no, sorry, Melissa?
No, I didn't put a report in because it's just business as usual, nothing major.
Chief?
I just got one thing to announce. I told you about the testing that we had Saturday for nine applicants. We also have hired a part-time dispatcher, Shane Reed. So if you see a young man with a beard down in the dispatch area, please say hello and introduce yourself.
It's great that there were so many applicants. That's, that's amazing.
We were hoping for more, but I agree.
Oh, I thought nine was a lot. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to note, too, I did put the new holiday schedule in the packets. I forgot to mention that in my report because it was a separate document. So the 2018 holiday schedule's in there.
Okay. Judy?
It's been super busy, tons of public records requests. I'm going to sit really fast because I pelled off, but I would like to express my best wishes to Jerry and Karen. I believe I have a unique position to see how in demanding the role of public servant can be. Jerry and Karen have given of themselves, Jerry for six years, Karen for 12, and I have a huge amount of respect for what this has meant to them in terms of devotion to the community and their ability to constantly respond to criticism and challenge and to keep the good of the village in view at all times. And Karen, I'll particularly miss you as a mentor to me over the years. You've been present and supportive during many challenging times for me personally and I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Jerry, Planning Commission?
Denise did an excellent job in reporting and one new, it's an expansion of a business, but for clarification purposes, what we approved out on Zenia Avenue for the brewery was a special events facility, which we really don't have, I won't hear in the community. And as you can see from the two pictures, our artist renditions of what the new facility's going to look like. We're kind of excited for some upgrades we'll be seeing at the south end of town.
Great, thanks. Brian?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate the opening of, reopening of the Bryan Community Center Gallery on January 19th from 6:00 to 9:00. And I also wanted to give a shout-out, the Arts and Culture Commission judged the downtown shop windows. And first place went to House of Ravenwood, second place went to Mills Park Hotel, and third place went to Glen Garden Gifts. So we appreciate all the folks that decorated. And for the Economic Sustainability Commission, we did not have a meeting this month, so we're just going to be starting with new stuff in the new year.
Judith?
The Library Commission, I, well, I was not there, but they're, we're now going to quarterly meetings. Joe Carr and Dorothy Smith, who are new members, new, new members, you know, were introduced and orientated to the works of the committee. I know there was discussion about the restroom renovation. The Food Forest brochure that Lee Duncan has done is complete. And when you go into the library, you might find it on one of the counters. And there's evidently still drainage issues north of the library and some handrail issues that need to be, need attention. The Energy Board, Wendy Van Buren, came to our last meeting. I really would like to bring a goal for the coming year about tree planting. She told us that properly placed trees will reduce by 20% the energy use of buildings. The loss of ash trees in the village means, I mean, she really feels like there is space for more trees here in the village, but there's that particular focus the Energy Board's thinking about, which is, you know, energy reduction from the shade of trees. And Justice System Task Force, the last meeting, while we kind of finalized our citations and warnings, report to council, Pam Conine came and described her transition into becoming our mayor. And I did want to point out, we have, we have two open seats for the JSTF. And I noticed there's a seat on Planning Commission, an alternate. And I had kind of thought we should just wait till the new year to try to address these because nobody's paying attention to our ads in the paper right now. I'm kind of doubting. I know we've gotten one interested person for the Planning Commission, which is great. And, but I just wanted to suggest we just restart in January with those. Anyway, I don't think that it makes sense for JSTF to try to adjust those openings at the moment, wait till the new people are in place. That was my suggestion.
Mary Ann?
Yeah. The Mediation Program recently celebrated, I think it was the 30, 30 years, that was the most recent. And the Mediation Program has been discussing the idea of restorative justice and I think wants to meet with the new mayor. I did meet with the school liaison. And, you know, the main thing that we talked about, other than the housing needs assessment that the village is doing and the facilities planning that the schools are doing, are the distinction between how the school board and village council works. And it was an interesting distinction, I think, because essentially, council has more of a active, proactive, executive function really than the school board. The school board is more reactive and really takes suggestions from the administration and the superintendent. So that was a very interesting discussion to have. The other HRC did not meet last time, the Environmental Commission, I did not attend. And Beaver Management Task Force has not met, so that's my report.
I don't really have much to report on my, on my commission's Green County Regional Planning. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that Ken LeBlanc is retiring, his position has been announced, or has been advertised. So that will be a huge loss, but he really set the stage for getting Green County Regional Planning back on track, back on budget and moving into some more regional planning work as opposed to simply approving or looking at subdivisions. MVRPC, nothing. We just did a little bit of update on our last. I just did notice that two priority projects from the state are two projects on Route 35. One is widening of 35 from James 8, well, it's from, more from like around Smithville down to, down to 675. So that's one project. And then the other is the interchange and the whole super street concept that's going to happen over in the Factory Valley Street area. Let's see, and we said, there were actually quite a few of us leaving MVRPC. Carol Graff, who's, who was the board president and has actually served in elective office for 36 years in Green County, is retiring. So that was, that's pretty monumental. I feel good going out with Carol. One of the, she and I are like the only two, well, not the only two Democrats in, in Green County, but a couple of the only two. And the Chamber, we've had a busy year. We'll have our annual meeting February 15th. We're going to have a board retreat on January 12th. And we're welcoming four new board members and saying goodbye to, I think, four or five. So it's been a good year. Okay, future agenda items. Who wants to, well, I guess, I mean, we'll know, we'll know what, we know what's here. Anything that was, anything, anybody you guys want to add to this?
Well, we will be discussing the, okay, no, the JFTF, that police data report. I don't know if we'll be discussing it.
It's not coming back, is it?
It's not coming back. Well, I mean, what we're going to do next?
Oh, well, no, we won't have a meeting before then.
Yeah.
We won't have a task force meeting before the next council meeting.
On that topic.
We're not going to have a meeting before January 2nd, Carol.
I'm thinking, firstly, I'm thinking the JSTF piece.
They're going to need a little time.
The next step would be, you know, will be discussed at the retreat, I would assume. That will be something of how you guys are going to move forward on that.
We're not having a retreat, but I'm aware of where we are.
You do need council agenda.
Gotcha.
It might be a short meeting. We'll ease you guys in.
Well, we'll ease you guys in, we'll be done by 8:00.
Add the retreat agenda to January 2nd.
Yes, that should be on there. Good point. I see what you're saying. Sorry.
Okay.
I wasn't catching that.
Okay. The Bowen presentation. So-
At that first retreat, the first half-day retreat, are we talking goals at all? Because if we are, we should put it on our agenda.
Well, that's what we're going to, you said we're going to talk about the agenda at our council meeting.
Well, the reason I'm asking, though, is if it is something that is feasibly going to be a discussion point at our, at the retreat, we should have a discussion with citizens on the, on the 2nd. Should we?
You normally put goals on, you normally put goals on in your first couple of meetings.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Who is going to plan the agenda for January 2nd?
I think what you usually do is let Judy know topics and she takes care of that, right?
No, no, for the second meeting. The agenda planning meeting should probably just be Brian as vice president.
Brian and Patty?
Yeah, Brian, Patty and Judy.
Judy and Melissa.
Okay.
Brian skips in until there's a vote. That's how that works.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Motion, what?
Last time.
I know, motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor, oh, second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Woo-hoo!
All right.
Happy New Year!
So, Brian, your agenda is just being brought up.
So, if you're sure of being brought up, it's 9:00.